Well, you know, you're like six.
Yeah.
Yep.
We only will be changing. We will only have.
And we'll have.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
No close sessions.
I was here.
You were.
Right.
Six months.
Is that what it is?
You came in twelve.
But it was the year in the year.
Yeah.
March of two thousand thirteen.
Oh, March two thousand thirteen.
Yeah.
You're right. Because I started in February of two thousand twelve.
Oh, so.
And they came back in the county in March.
Oh, okay, so here, you're part of your plus.
Troy.
We had more senior than you.
On the on the position.
But we were gonna have.
You're right, he was not, yes.
Ben.
I think it was.
Sure.
You were.
I have.
Yes.
Then after, we were taking it back and stick here. Stick for the.
There, trying to.
It's there.
Especially after I went over that.
Oh, it's sixty miles.
Which one?
Which one?
Oh, and the.
Yeah.
Did you see the size?
Yeah.
Well, it just said, oh. And then you guys, after I did it, then there was a ten, go ten miles an hour.
Okay. Do you have to get those up now?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was like, oh my goodness. You know, you go by pumps.
Yeah, that's the problem with size, because some are, some are more long than others.
I had Ricky on two thousand eight pickup truck. I thought it was gonna fly off into the sun. I'm glad you guys did that though.
Well, yeah, we're gonna fix it. Maybe it's early this week, so. Though moving, so we have the contractor putting the material back down. It'll be our main.
I didn't take it all.
Obviously. That's always tough. Two different things like that.
Did you guys get?
That's, that's my. Yeah.
We got.
We're one of the.
Because it was like.
Streaming.
I, I came in.
A lot of them, like an army.
Yeah.
And.
But anyway.
My friend mentioned one.
Okay.
Stay on a hottie or.
Yes.
Will.
I gotta.
It's irish.
You probably.
Streaming.
Internet.
And then lots of.
So you can.
Right. Or even know it channel.
Right.
Channel.
She ain't on nine hundred and sixty-two.
By the time I went to.
Jackson.
We'd already had the. Besides, uh.
But, anyway.
Why are you doing that?
Oh, and cover it.
Yeah.
Right.
What would you do?
Be good, you think?
Because if. It was here. And after. Could be along the.
Hearing.
She started. Only one year. To get to it.
So we'll see, we'll see. If anybody in the public.
I, I guess.
Over my old, my old.
My old.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that just something? Or.
Nine o'clock, I'll call the county board to order. End of the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Undo the roll, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlongen, here. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinen.
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Chris would like to add his item on the County Road Fifty-Five right away, uh, right before his annual report at nine thirty. So add that right before the annual report at nine thirty. And the, the rest materials that you have are four ditch authority later.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second. Motion's been made and second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, the county board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain, reach frame from speaking from, from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meeting, so please obtain, obtain the board's consent before addressing the county board. Please, comments are generally reserved for open forum segment or the public hearing. However, public comments on the agenda item may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today's meeting, please turn off your cell phones and turn your cell phones to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, is there anybody out back there?
Amanda's here.
All right.
Good morning, Chair Pop.
Morning.
County Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, I hope you had a fine weekend. It was really nice out and, um, now we're here again, um, this morning. Wanted to introduce our new intern for Benton Economic Partnership. It is her first day on the job, so.
Welcome.
Be, be nice, right?
Yeah.
But I wanted to introduce, um, Michel Mulea, so if you wanna go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
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 So I'm Michel Mulea. I'm the new intern for Benton Economic Partnerships. I am a student at Saint Cloud State, so majoring in, or double majoring in real estate and planning and community development. So hopefully, we'll be going into my senior year and graduating next spring. Yeah, so look forward to having this position, working with Amanda and meeting you all was, it's a great, it's a pleasure to be here.
Go.
Welcome.
Any questions for her? I know, I guess I'm surprised you're still here after our board meeting on last Thursday.
Wow.
She really, we really loaded up on things at that board meeting.
Right.
And that, and you got a great mentor in Amanda, too. That's, that would be my guess.
Yes.
So, all right, nice meeting you and.
Nice meeting you.
Enjoyed the summer working for B E P.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So is that gonna be two parking spots now?
Two.
Or are you gonna car?
Well, I, you know. I think we're.
Jared, yours has got.
As much as we can. Why do you want?
She can have mine.
Yeah, it's fine. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
So, we have the, the consent, consent agenda.
Aye.
Numbers. One through ten. Does anyone wish to have any of these pulled for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to see number six.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I wanna pull the, uh, number ten, please. Just for clarification.
Six and ten.
Yep.
So, number six and number ten have been pulled for further discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve all of them except for six and ten.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve all but six and ten. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Number six, Beth.
Um, I had a question on. The lowest boundary.
Uh, Roxanne is with us by go-to, I see. That was number six to plat, right?
Yep.
Okay, Roxanne, can you hear us?
I can.
Oh. Wow. That's kinda scary.
It's just easier to walk down.
Morning, Roxanne.
I am listening.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So is the border a little bit above where the, for, the original line was? On the bottom plant?
Yes, so, uh, you've got lots, uh, two, three, four, and five. Five and two, two is the north lot, five is the southern lot. Um, each one is being adjusted by about between thirty and forty feet. Um, so the, the southern lot is adjusted, it's gonna be wider by forty feet. The northern lot will be wider by thirty feet, and then they're creating a central lot, which is just slightly larger than the average sized lot in there.
So one on the bottom, is there a piece of a building that's past the line?
No.
Okay. Yeah, with this, it looks like it goes all the way down to that black line and.
Well, with the aerial photos, the property lines don't line up exactly. It's always skewed a little bit because when they're taking photos, um, from the air, it just, there's always like that natural, um, skew to the, to the visual, um, base versus what we put on the, um,
So borders look good?
What's that?
The borders look good?
The borders are fine.
No problems with buildings?
No.
Okay.
Nope. These are all tight lots anyways. In the cove, they've got, uh, between five and ten foot setbacks, so it's very easy to make it look like the, uh, properties are over the line when they're not.
Okay. Um, Roxanne, these are all reviewed by, um, Planning Commission before they come to us, right? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Planning Commission has vented these.
Yep.
Pretty heavily.
Yes.
When they, when they get here.
And this also went through Watab Township.
And Watab Township, so it's been vented twice.
Yep.
Okay.
So I vote to approve.
We'll do it.
Vote to approve.
I'll second.
Oh, do we wanna take both of them?
Yeah, we'll do both at the same time.
Uh, I see Sheriff Heck is on. Uh, Sheriff, I just wanted to pull this one. It looks like they doubled the amount that could be reimbursed to Benton County, um, for the, uh, DOC work release program. Um, they didn't add another year. This is just for this year to June of twenty twenty, uh, two, correct?
Well, they amend, they are mending the contract to extend the deadline of the contract and because they're adding another year, they are doubling the amount of money that is available potentially to the county.
Okay.
So they, and because they, because they're adding another year, they're adding more money to it. Um, as I was looking to get my documents from, I go, I do see, I, I know. They're sending this forward a second time because I think I already sent it over the middle name. I believe that I forced a consent signature on. So I, I guess I would respectfully ask that this one be pulled from. The interview to sign it twice.
Could we just make a?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, so, Sheriff, we can't hear you very loud. So what you're saying is that we've already approved this in May?
It, yes, it appears that way. It looks like I sent it over on May eighteenth and it was signed by the board at that time. I'm not sure exactly at this moment why I got it back with my dovetailing signatures, but I'll look into that.
Then I guess we just need to approve one, correct?
Correct.
Or I never make a motion.
We'll make a motion.
Take it off.
So. Okay. Prove what? You mentioned the number.
Six.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and appro, and seconded to approve number six, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to pull item number ten from the agenda, from the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pull item number ten. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks. Okay, now we'll, now we'll go to Monty.
All right. Good morning. Uh, this marks the start of our budget process for two thousand twenty-two, and a couple of things to ask and look at this morning. First would be a budget calendar. Have it up here on the screen. Uh, the major budget events from today through final budget adoption in December. So if I, I can just highlight a few of those things. So here are today, uh, looking at the budget calendar and budget guidelines. You can see a few red letter events that are important for departments and me. Uh, July ninth, base budgets, July sixteenth, policy issues. This is a key date for you all to think about, the week of August ninth through the thirteenth, for, uh, department and outside agency budget presentation. So wanna make sure before we get too far along that that week is gonna work for you all, August ninth through the thirteenth. And it doesn't mean, of course, the whole week. Usually, we do, we, I think we usually have like three.
Days.
About three half-days.
Right.
Three half-day sessions, you know? So that's all your departments and outside agencies that come in to make their budget presentations. And then once those are done, in late August to mid-September, uh, committees of the whole to make decisions on the budget and so on. Ordinarily, uh, the proposed budget levy would be adopted this second means September, but I understand that all of our board members can be here, uh, for that second means September. So I propose that proposed budget and levy adoption would occur September twenty-eighth, and that I believe is the last Tuesday of the month. And I should mention is we have until the end of September to adopt the proposed budget levy. So I just, do you all have a sense that September twenty-eighth will work? That's the last Tuesday, I believe, in September.
So, Monty, we have, we're gonna call a special board meeting for that?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be a, a, a brief special board meeting, uh, to adopt the proposed budget and levy. And it's, I, I think, you know, given the magnitude of that action, it's certainly nice if all board members can be in attendance, uh, for that. And that gives, gives us a certainly more time to work out the budget for twenty-two anyway. And then, uh, next big dates, December fourteenth, that's the, the night of our truth of taxation hearing, uh, beginning at six. And, uh, we moved, if I recall correctly, we moved the first meeting in December to later because our, our ordinary schedule would have conflicted with the AMC conference.
Correct.
So that's moved to the following Tuesday.
And the other part was that we had some conflict last year between land services and auditor treasures, stuff didn't get out on time, we had to postpone and stuff like that.
And this, you bet. This gives those departments more time, a little more breathing room to get those, uh, the TNT notices out and so on. Yep. And then final, um, I don't think that date is right. That says December twenty-eighth, that's not right.
You know? I, I, maybe, maybe, okay.
I think actually when we scheduled the regular means for two thousand twenty-one, we scheduled the last meeting of the year on December twenty-eighth.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. We did, and the reason why is we, we moved this first board meeting to the fourteenth, so to have the next board meeting two weeks later, we went with the twenty-eighth. So I caught my, yeah, that, that's, that's correct, actually. So everything has just shifted a week later than normal in December, so. So that's the budget calendar. Uh, any issues or concerns about those dates that you see up there? And back to the, the week of budget presentations in August, sometime maybe, um, first meeting in July, I'll ask you to set those specific dates, those, again, three half-day sessions.
Okay.
Okay. No questions there, then I'll shift.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, I will be on vacation, supposedly September first through the nineteenth.
Okay.
So, so thanks for, uh, changing those dates for me. We've done it last year, too.
Did we?
Yeah.
I can't remember that far back.
Let's move to the.
And two years ago.
If we may, then we'll move to the budget development guidelines, and these are really, uh, instructions for departments as they develop their budget requests for two thousand twenty-two. Not a lot has necessarily changed from, uh, last year, prior years, but I, I'd like to highlight a few things. One, one, as I drafted these, one theme I, I tried to incorporate is that, well, we're not seeing, the state budget situation is vastly better than we thought it was gonna be a year ago. That's a good thing. But we are still facing many cost pressures here locally that we have to take in consideration. The cost of a class comp study, the cost of step increases, the cost of health insurance. Those will add up to several hundred thousand dollars right there off the bat. So these guidelines ask departments to think about those as they're considering the request that they make. We're gonna be facing some substantial costs right from the beginning. So moving on to these guidelines, um, one thing that I, I wanna point out in this last paragraph, and is, you know, the budget process is, is a place and time for departments to make their, their needs to the, the county board known. In other words, I don't wanna say, okay, well, even though you may have needs, don't articulate those, please do. It's important to let the board know what the needs of the department are during this process. So I, I certainly wanted to stress that. You know, even though we do have these fiscal constraints and so on, it's important for them to let the board know what's going on in those departments, what their workload is and what those needs are. So, uh, moving on, just a few other key features of the budget guidelines. We have what's called the base budget phase, and that's really, uh, for those that have been here before, it's, it's really like a starting point. It really, uh, as you'll, you'll see later in the, the budget book you'll get, the base budget kind of answers the question, what level of funding is needed to continue our operations at a status quo level? In other words, no new stuff, just to keep the place running as it normally would. That's the purpose of the base budget. It truly is a starting point then for the board then to, to decide, okay, what should the ultimate budget levy look like? So, uh, that's what kicks off right away is the, what we call the base budget phase, and we ask departments to develop their base budgets and also revenue estimates. When they, the, the, the key criteria that they should follow when they develop those base budgets, you'll see under item number five, you have, you have, uh, item number five, A through F. And these are the criteria conditions under which they can request a base budget increases. So it tries, it tries to sort of keep, um, kind of a box around, uh, how that base budget can grow. In other words, it's not totally unconstrained. There's some parameters or criteria that departments should follow as they make those requests. And I'll just maybe just highlight a few. Um, you could, you could seek a base budget increase if you have a contract which has an escalation clause in it. For example, if we have an existing contract that said, okay, this is gonna go up three percent, or it's gonna go up five percent, that would be a base budget increase. Um. Uh, no, uh, 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 looking at D, for example, when expenditure from an account is predominate based upon the number of clients can serve, the department has no control of the number of clients. In other words, it's, it's really not very discretionary. They, um, you know, they, they have to provide the service and it's, it's required. You, you often see these, for example, in human services, like, for example, inanimate burials or detox, uh, those kinds of line items in human services where we have a mandate to provide the service, it's based upon, you know, the number of clients and the caseload. Just another example. Um. For, uh, E, for, here's another good example. Cost increases for a commodity outside the control of the department. Fuel, for example. That was an interesting sound effect.
Somebody has their mic on.
Somebody has their mic on, you know?
Yeah. Fuel, for example, would be a, a, a great, uh, that's an example there of where that, that is beyond a control of the department. Someone on go-to might wanna mute a mic if you're not already muted. Thanks. I'm gonna see. I think it's this person right here. I, I fixed it.
I think you're right.
All righty. Let's move on. So we go through this base budget exercise. Departments develop their estimates for their base budgets. Um, they also help us out with revenue estimates. And that brings together the base budget. Anything that isn't funded in the base budget that they feel they need, it's over and above the base budget, is what we call a policy issue. And, uh, that's what departments tend to focus on when they do their budget presentations to you all. So it really gets, it's new stuff, it's extra stuff, it's not in the base budget, so it might be a new position, it might be a piece of equipment, it might be some program, what have you. That's what we call a policy issue. And, uh, there's some parameters and guidelines that, that hopefully departments can follow as they develop those policy issue requests. It's nice if they, if they support the county's vision and mission, it's nice if they support the county's, uh, strategic priorities. We, we like to see them tie those requests to those strategic priorities. So, those are the draft budget guidelines for departments. And I, just one thing I should mention is a bit of a change from the past is, your, your budget calendar had this on, I didn't mention it, is we're gonna do like an in-person budget kickoff meeting. Uh, I heard, uh, several months ago that there was a desire maybe for a little more discussion about the budget process, how it works, what's expected and so on. So that's something that we've added this year, it's actually this week, it's Thursday, I believe, a budget kickoff meeting for departments to come in and we'll, we'll meet here and go over these guidelines, go over the calendar, just question and answer session about how the budget is developed and the parameters and so on. So that was an addition for this year. So I'll stop at this point. Questions, thoughts about those two items, budget calendar, budget guidelines?
Any comments, questions?
Nice, nice job of explaining it.
Sure.
Thank you, Monty.
Yep, and you know, at any point in the process, especially if our new board members have questions about, you know, how they work this, please, you know, it's one of those things I've been doing a long time and I, I don't wanna make any assumptions or whatnot, so please don't hesitate to ask any questions or hit the pause button as we're going through this, so. So if you all could, if you had a, if you could make a motion to approve those two, that would be great.
Sure moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the base budget calendar and, uh, guidelines. Any other comments, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry.
Mitch, your next item is just informational only. Um, our, our very, our long-serving support person in extension will be retiring soon, and, uh, this is led, I, good opportunity for some discussion about this position. I think, of course, we, we need the position, there's no question about that. Really, the issue is, should it be a county employee or should it be a University of Minnesota Extension employee? One thing that, that, just to mention is that of all the folks that are downstairs in extension, only this one position is a county employee. The rest of these folks actually are University of Minnesota, uh, contracted positions. And, uh, Johanna and I met with, uh, with Lori Vici, uh, about a week ago, and she was telling us, uh, of all the counties that she works with, it's kind of a mixed bag. In some instances, it's a county employee, in some instances, it's a university contracted employee. It really, it varies from county to county. There's not like a set rule. And she said this position could be a university contracted position. Uh, as you see in a gen item, it looks like, at least in the short term, there could be some decent savings of this position being a University of Minnesota contracted position. I think too also, the position has always kind of been a bit of an island, you know, that there really is no one here that it, it, it supervises the position. Uh, really, for all intents and purposes, it really does report to and works very closely with the University of Minnesota positions, like, again, all the rest of those folks are. So Lori said if the position was a university position, it would report to her, she's the regional extension director. So I, I, it seems like to me, in long-term, it, it sort of clarifies that reporting relationship. It creates a closer connection between that position and the university. It creates a closer connection between that position and the university. And the person, of course, in this job has always done a wonderful job, there's no question about that whatsoever. But maybe creates a stronger tie to those university positions. The, the extension committee is going to discuss this sometime in the next two weeks, I believe.
I think it's about the second or third Monday in June.
Yeah, it's going to be discussed at the extension committee. So for, again, for today, it's just informational, informational only. And we'll see what kind of response the extension committee has to this idea. But I just want to let you know it's kind of out there, we've been talking about it and we had that meeting before.
I, I think it makes it a little bit easier for the regional director to manage this position if it's a university employee than, you know, I mean, Darlene has been great down there, she's, you know, she's been there forever.
Yeah.
And that wasn't an issue, but you know, with a new hire, you don't know how it's, how it's going to go. And if, if, you know, and I, I know there's some issues in some counties where, you know, I'm not your employee type situation, so.
And again, there's really no local supervisor.
No.
Supervisor of the position. It used to be a long time ago that, of course, you all knew Dan Martins. Dan was kind of like the unofficial supervisor of that position. And Dan was here all the time, but as you know, now, the livestock person, I'm sorry, crops is shared and sometimes here, but sometimes isn't. So there really isn't an onsite supervisor per se, so.
There's, there's a couple other budget savings or, you know, that will come through that. One is that some of our, some of our horticulture and, and crops is doing some work in Sherburne County because they just don't, you know, they're northern part of the county. So they're calling there, so they're doing a little conversation with them right now too, to see if maybe we can, you know, add them or whatever, so. But yeah, it looks like it probably would be something that we should consider on extension. Let me get there.
Mr. Chair. Is it common in other counties that this kind of is the same, kind of, they, they report down to U of M?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't ask Lori like how, the numbers of how many of her counties are county employees versus university. Again, it's just, it's a mix, it's a mixture. You know, she said in some counties, if it's a county employee, oftentimes that person works for other departments too, they're not just extension.
Yeah.
So if that works for that county, great. I think for us, it's been pretty clear that that needs a full-time support person. So they couldn't really be shared with another department, so.
And I think part of that is because of our unique situation with the three counties, Todd, or Morrison, Stearns and Benton, that we share these employees makes it even more that, you know, for, there's nobody else down there to share some of that workload with her. So we'll look at it and come back with a recommendation.
We'll see what the extension committee says. Alright, we move on now. Let's see, I think I was going to actually try and open this up.
Where is it?
Did I hear voices? I heard a voice out there. Okay. I think we're ready for the David Drown Associates Recommended Classification Compensation System. Well, today's a pretty big day to ask you all to consider an adoption of the, of the new compensation system. So what you have before you in this table is all of our current classifications, their previous job title in their department, their old pay grade, I should say, their current pay grade, current minimum, maximum. And in some instances, you're going to see new job titles based upon recommendations from Tessa, our compensation consultant. One of the big themes that you'll see throughout the new job title was this creation of so-called global positions. And for those that were here before, you may recall, we, we had a significant problem with pay equity compliance. We had many, many classifications, single occupant classifications, predominantly filled by, filled by women. And that was creating a pay equity problem for us. So when you can reduce the number of classifications you have, it actually strengthens your ability to comply with pay equity. And that's why you see these global, these global classifications. Also too, I think it, it makes movement between departments easier. It's the same position from one department to another, so you can do more in the way of like transfers rather than have to do, if it's a unique position, typically it's got to be posted, recruited, interviewed. So the, the process to move from department to department is much more tedious. But if it's a global position, it could be, it could be a transfer. So, and then moving on over in the columns, you see the consultants recommend a new pay grade, new minimum and maximum, and then those changes. One of the things I wanted.
Excuse me, Monty, could you pull up your, I think somebody's on the mic again, could you pull up?
Excuse me?
I believe somebody's on the mic again, if you could.
You bet, let's take a look. Yep. See.
It's caller two.
It's Julie from.
It's caller two.
And down in the bottom right corner, there you go.
You know, I probably should just hit mute all. This could get really dangerous. Okay. Okay.
They're starting to tune in for the ditch hearing.
Yeah. How's it, how's it sounding now? Ain't hearing?
They're still there.
You're still there.
Caller two down on the bottom right corner, I believe.
My challenge is, dang, just a second here, is getting down to them. I'm not able to get down to them.
Ready for the ditch hearing?
Sure.
There you go.
Chris has asked me to let folks out there on GoTo meeting to know that we're, we're not ready for our ditch, ditch authority hearing yet. And that's probably still going to be another, oh, 20 minutes or so. And also too, if, if you could do us a favor and mute your microphones, that, that'd help us a lot here, thank you. Alrighty. Back to business. One thing I want to point out is, is the origin of the, the new minimum and new maximum. Where did those numbers come from? Well, many months ago, the county board agreed to a list of comparative counties that would be, we would use as our, as our labor market, our comparative group of counties. And I'll make this a little bit larger. But there you can see, from Becker at the top to Todd at the bottom, those are the listed comparative counties that the consultant used to develop the wage numbers in this table. Those are minimum and maximums. And quite a large group of counties. Certainly it includes our four neighbors, Stearns and Sherburne, Morrison, Malax, but many other counties that are of similar population, similar tax capacity and so on. So that's where all of that wage data came from. And the goal of the consultant was get us as close as possible to the average of all these comparative counties. So that's what gets you again, those new minimums and those new maximums. And this decision was made in early 2021, if I recall, I'm sorry, 20, 2020. I'm going to, hang on folks, let me just do something here. I am going to.
Caller number three now.
I am going to find the mute all button. There we go. Alright. I hit the mute, I found mute all that time. Okay, back to this table. So at this point, the appeal process is, is complete. Our board members, Commissioner Pop, Commissioner Heinen, Hurd, several appeals, also many of those appeals resolved at the consultant level that never even had to go to our, our appeal subcommittee. And so that brings us to today. And if you're all inclined to approve this today, then we will begin in our negotiations with our, each of our eight bargaining units to implement the, the study. So at this point, after you've taken a vote, I wanted to just make sure I pause and, and thank a few folks for their involvement in this process. At this point, do you all have any questions or comments about this?
Any questions, comments? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Well, I got to thank both Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Heinen for their hard work on this. I know this started before the three of us new commissioners got involved. And we've heard, I've heard through the county many times over the years that the pay scales need to, something needs to be done. So I appreciate all the commissioners before us and our two current ones for their hard work on this, as well as county staff. So this is much needed and overdue.
And, you know, Tessa from David Drown and Associates was great to work with. I mean, every, every question, anything we had, she was right there to answer us.
Yes, maybe that's a good way to add those thanks too, is certainly Tessa did a tremendous amount of work and was very tactful and diplomatic with employees in resolving, but also firm. I think Tessa has a great way of being very firm when she needs to be. I also too wanted to make sure I thank Johanna, Johanna and Emily spent tremendous amount of time reviewing job descriptions, cleaning things up, doing a lot of that behind the scenes logistical work to keep the process moving. So I want to make sure that I say thanks to Johanna and Emily for those contributions. I also want to make sure we thank our employees themselves because this process started by every employee filling out in a very lengthy position questionnaire, spending a lot of time describing what they do every day. And these things are about 10 or 11 pages, so every employee filled those out. So there's a lot of investment of time for our employees as well. So Beth, we want to thank them for their participation in this process.
Yep. Thank everybody that was involved in this and it probably got drug out a little longer than we anticipated, you know, due to 2020.
And, and new commissioners coming on board.
Correct.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion. Do you want to?
I just wanted to mention, there's two pieces to this, this process this morning. You've got the table itself, the wage grid, as sometimes people call it. And then secondly, an attachment number two is the promotional policy for those folks who, who could move into the senior classification. Maybe if I, if I may, before we move on, is there's a few instances where our consultant recommends the creation of a senior classification. And off the top of my head, I, I know, and for example, in the highway department, in the engineering tech, there would be a senior classification. In the county attorney's office, there'd be a county attorney, one, two and three. And the human services department, there'd be an eligibility specialist senior and a social worker senior. And the notion there is to give folks opportunity, after they've been here a certain period of time, once they've meet, they've met the minimum qualifications of the senior classification, they could receive this promotion into the senior. And, and one, one goal, of course, of this is to help improve our retention, you know, keep folks here who are experienced, keep them here longer, reward that longevity. So you'll have, and again, in those instances, the senior classification. So we needed a policy which described, well, how do you become a senior? So that's what you see in attachment number two. And I, I should just cover a few, a few key points of this. This is contained in our personnel policies, I'm sorry, I don't have it on the screen, but, and I, I should mention is that I shared this proposed policy with, with each department head that was affected by it to get their feedback and they said it looked fine. So I want you to know that I did share that with those departments. Basically, I'm looking at page, it's, it's number 23. It's item number two where it says career advancement promotions. So basically, when an employee has met the minimum qualifications in the senior job description, they become eligible for promotion. They must have had satisfactory performance evaluations in the past two years. And then it's up to the department head to identify those folks who are eligible, submit that proposal, that request to the human, human resources director, who all, also must approve that promotion. And if those two parties agree, department head, human resources director, then that promotion to senior would be approved. I believe that's really the essence of the promotional policy. And we, we thought we needed some kind of policy on paper, so it's rational and it's, and it, there's also some checks and balances, that's why included the notion of having the human resources director also approving, because then Johanna can review, did the person meet the minimum qualifications of the senior job description? Did they have good performance evaluations and so on? So that's why we've included that. So that's the second part of this morning's action on the class and comp study.
I'll start with the first one then. I'll make a motion to approve the DDA recommended classification and compensation system.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Anybody want any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie.
I'll make a motion to approve the promotional policy for the senior classifications as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve attachment number two, the promotion to senior classification. Anybody want any other clarification or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Thank you. Thanks, Monty.
Alrighty. Mike, you need the, you need the presentation stuff? You got it? Okay.
Mike Harvey, Land Services Director, update on e-recording and local board of appeals.
Good morning, how you guys doing today?
Good morning, awesome.
I want to thank you also for investing in our employees and Benton County as a brand. I think that's a wonderful thing. I think it's going to pay dividends for the county, so I just want to thank you for that. Want to thank Monty for his hard work too, I don't think he got to thank you, so I'm going to throw one of those out there. This is just a quick update, I'll try and give you five minutes of your day back. In December of 2020, we were e-recording about 23% of the documents that came through. Those are mostly property, almost exclusively property-related documents. And now that we are able to accept the mortgage registration and the deed tax, we are e-recording 61%. I did a little update this morning through the middle of May, almost the end of May there, so 61% of the documents that come through this county are coming digitally. So that means my staff are also interacting with most of those documents digitally. So there are some cost savings there for the county. And just to give you a little, maybe a little background information, if you go to your mortgage company and you close on a document, they might be using a, what's called a trusted submitter. So what they will do is they will submit that document to a, like a middleman, and they'll pay them a small fee, four or $5, to then have that middleman submit that document to the county and guarantee those monies. And then that money comes to the county afterwards. So it's kind of a, they're, they're called a trusted submitter, but that's typically how those documents are getting e-recorded. A lot of your national companies are using this, kind of an intermediary to do that. I just, I would like to thank the Outer Treasurers Office for helping us set up the ACH accounts with those different banks so that they can track all that money coming in. I know that that costs them time and effort in their office, so I'd like to thank them for facilitating that so that our customers can have modern service. On that same note, recorded volumes of documents are up 18% from 2019 to 2020, 17% so far this year. So we're looking at potentially recording 9,600 documents this year. In 2019, we were doing about 7,000 documents. So a 38% increase in recorded documents and we've added new staff. So we actually had a staff gone for a full month, so our office has been kicking butt and want to thank my staff for that. But I think it's good for you guys to know, you know, just how busy the county is too. So along that, you know, if you have more volumes, you're going to have more revenue. So you can see there are some of those revenue numbers in 2019, we were at about 378,000. 2020, 487,000. And so far in 2021, including May, we're, we're actually up around $85,000 in revenues already this year. So that's looking good for the county. And what you're seeing is a lot of plats. I think you've heard Roxanne in here many times talking about how many people are plating property. That's good news for the county. That's development and the more stuff that's getting recorded on a property, usually that means activity. So I think those are positives for the county going forward. I want to talk a little bit about local boards of appeal. They were all completed in April. We did not have to do any reconvene meetings, so they went pretty smoothly. Total attendance at those meetings was about 18 constituents who actually had an appeal. There might have been a few more in the crowd at times. We had one open book appointment, so you have the local board of appeal option where the local jurisdiction retains the authority to make changes at that meeting. And then you have open book meetings where the county has the authority to make that, those changes. So that would be me or my staff. And we only had one appeal at those open book meetings and that's the whole city of Sauk Rapids, Foley, Sartell, there's a couple other jurisdictions, Smallwood, City of Gilman. So that's, that's pretty impressive. As far as phone calls this year, we had 92. We kind of expected to have a few more because people were hiding out last year. So the years following that, 68 and 80. But that's an update from our office, just wanted you guys to kind of know what was going on, since I don't usually have any regular business. Monty suggested I, I get up here and give you guys a little update. So, and any questions from you?
Any questions? I guess the only one I have, going to more e-recording, is that saving your office some staff time?
I think initially it costs a little time because they have to get used to that process. We set up new workflows, so those documents are digitally moving from one person to another and we still have checks and balances in place. So when you're recording a document, you want two people looking at that document to make sure grant or grantee or, you know, you have the right legal description, those types of things. So I think initially it costs a little time, I think now it's starting to save time.
Good time.
If we have another pandemic, then my employees will be able to work from home too. So there's that option as well. You know?
I'm glad we're in the election.
I've got a question.
Yeah, Beth.
You see all these ads about people having their property, they don't know their property's been taken or they get eviction from their home because somebody stole it. Is, is this secure or have you had, we had any problems with that?
No. So the same laws that govern paper documents or the same ones that govern the digital ones, they, if it's not a recordable document, we're not going to record it. And that's been a huge concern for my staff, something you might as well know, a lot of property documents that come in are not recordable. So we send them back, they're called reject documents because they don't have the adequate information to be recorded.
Okay.
So we are the guardians of, of what gets recorded. But unfortunately, there are things that are allowed to legally be recorded that are not ideal, but that's, you have to work with what the statute says, we can't make it up as we go. So I'd say our staff do an excellent job. And we have a group of, you know, counties that we regularly correspond with to make sure that nothing's sliding through the rocks, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm glad we're using our technology now.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Alright, thanks, Mike.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
At this time, I'll recess the regular board meeting to conduct human services.
We'll call the human services board meeting to order. Bob, do you have anything to add to the agenda to take away?
Yes, I would like to take the only item I have on the agenda today and pull it for future discussion. There have been some questions that have surfaced and I want the opportunity to do its justice in answering those questions, so I'd like to pull that item.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented, as amended. I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've got one item under consent.
I'll move approval of consent.
I'll move approval of consent.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Bob, what do you have for us?
So with that being said, I don't have anything to say.
Really?
Thanks for pulling that, Bob. I had a lot of questions, actually. I did get a lot of answers, but I think we need to dig into this a little bit more.
That's fine.
So I appreciate that. Okay, anything else in front of the human services board? Then I'll adjourn, send it back to the chair.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, we'll reconvene the regular board meeting. Um, and it looks like Chris Bird is up. And first thing, we have an added agenda item on County Road fifty-five.
Yeah, uh, so I'll thank my two previous department heads for giving me extra time because I will gladly use that up. So this added agenda item, thank you for considering adding this to the agenda. As you know, we're working on a construction project on County Road fifty-five up near Rice. And there was an, uh, kind of agreement in direction from the board that we would pay for the construction costs and widen the roadway. The widened roadway would result in two twelve-foot driving lanes and then a six-foot shoulder on each side of the roadway to facilitate some additional, uh, traffic concerns in the area. This did require additional highway easement. Um, we were instructed to acquire that additional highway easement outside of the city limits of Rice. And Rice was responsible for acquiring those additional highway easements, um, within their city limits. Yeah, so we're ready to start construction. Uh, we awarded a construction contract last month. Our contractor's ready to work, um, this week. They're ready to start work this week. We received a copy of the easement documents that the city of Rice had used and had property owner sign. And we have some concerns with it. Uh, one of the concerns was that the easement document was written as a trail easement and not a highway easement. The issue with that is that in that easement document was language saying that this easement could be used for, only for pedestrian purposes and enlisted some specific purposes. And it did not make it clear that it could be used for highway purposes. Uh, maybe you can already see the concerns with that. If we can't use for highway purposes, that re- reduces the functionality of our roadway. The second concern was that that was described to the center of the roadway. So it does cover up the addition, the existing highway easement. Uh, the third concern was that it was the grantee, the one receiving the easement was the city of Rice. And we expressed to the city of Rice that that still needs to be the city, the county of Benton because it is a Benton County roadway. Um, I understand that those documents haven't been recorded as of yet. I certainly hope they're not on the way or going through the new electronic workflow. Uh, because if it was recorded, basically that means the city of Rice just took over ownership of County Road fifty-five for trail purposes and not for highway purposes. So we're kind of at a crossroads, pardon the pun, uh, of what to do next. We have our easements, um, in the county outside of the city limits and we can move forward with construction. We have a contract awarded, a contractor ready to go, and we can continue our work on Rice. Uh, but when we get to the city limits of Rice and we don't have that additional width needed to construct the wider roadway, what do we do? Well, Bobby, stop there.
I got a question. I mean, we're, if the co- if the city does take ownership of that road, it's all the way, not just in the Rice, correct?
Uh, yeah, so where's my map? I have some maps. There was some platted development, um, I don't see it here. So we do have portions within the city of Rice where we already have a sixty-foot dedicated road right-of-way. So it was primarily, there was parcels on the east side of County Road fifty-five. And you may have recalled, there were some discussions about a trail easement. And so if the city wanted additional easement, they had the right to go ahead and acquire additional easement. And that would have pushed that easement to seventy-five feet from the center of the roadway. So if they want the extra, we needed sixty feet from the center of roadway to construct our additional wider roadway. If they wanted the additional fifteen feet for trail easement, that would have been fine. And that could have been a separate, well, probably would have needed to be a separate document. So you have a highway easement right next to a trail easement. And that trail easement could have been in the city of Rice's name. But we need that road, existing roadway, our County Road fifty-five, to be in County of Benton's name and dedicated for highway purposes.
Mr. Chair, so Chris, where's the miscommunication? I mean, what's, what's happening with the city of Rice? Is it a challenge to the easements? Is it a miscommunication? What's the issue?
Um, I can't say. We provided, and I, I, it's in the agenda item here, was this exact document to the city's consultant engineer last fall, um, to use these documents, um, right here. And the county of Benton, um, had our name. Basically, they just need to fill in, um, the party's names, the dollars, fill in the legal description of the property acquired. And then there would have been the person, the permanent easement. So we shared these documents with them through their cons- I don't know if it was their consultant or between the city, city's consultant, the city, the city guidance, I guess I'm not sure. Um, we just found out about these easements, uh, on Friday. I was just informed though that the city clerk of city Rice, Julie, uh, Fandell is on the call. If you want to ask her specifically, uh, she may be able to answer questions. But, um, yeah, I think definitely concerned. Because our concern is if we, we get these recorded, well, first of all, if they're not recorded, we're still backed to only thirty-three feet and we can't construct the wider roadway within that thirty-three feet. If the documents were to get recorded, um, then, then it's not, not our roadway, at least on the east half of the road.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If, if they, I'm, I'm always worst case scenario. If they are recorded, what are the steps to go backwards and get this basically back into Benton County? Or is it pretty much a done deal?
Um, I would hope for a spirit of cooperation from the city of Rice and a willingness to go back to those landowners and have new documents signed and new documents recorded. I think that could be the simplest solution. Even the ones that haven't been recorded, go back to those landowners and say, we would like you to sign these, um, corrected documents.
Mr. Chair, if we could appropriate, let's hear from the city of Rice. She's online.
Yep.
One minute.
Okay, let's, Mr. Hyman.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Chris, just for clarification, we have the right-of-way up to the city limits?
Correct, yes. I have my assistant engineer, Mark Wood. We have ours and our easements are recorded and, um, we're, we're, we could start construction outside of the city limits. I, I will preface it, part of that is city, I mean, county park property.
Yep.
But we have the width that we need to construct our roadway. Outside of the city limits.
Right. So it just goes from the city limits? So we have everything up to the city limits? So that's going to bring up a further discussion after we can have clarification from the city.
And Julie's got, she doesn't have a mic.
Says I don't have a mic. And I want, Julie, you could.
You could certainly call in, Julie, if you wanted to.
There are specific reasons I'll add, um, for a highway easement. Uh, in current statute, uh, highway easement allows other things to happen, obviously for highway purposes. But public utilities have a right to place their utilities within highway easement. That's an additional concern that I may have. If it's no longer highway easement and we have existing utilities in there, that may be concern. It may preclude per, future public utilities from locating in that easement. So there, there just are additional concerns that I may have. We can't get this back to a highway easement versus a trail easement.
I'm just wondering why the engineer from the city of Rice didn't follow the template that was sent to him. I mean, it must be a miscommunication here. Somewhere's that they went out and did their own template when it, one was provided for him.
Monty's working vigorously.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Need Sheila to mute her mic.
We're both typing. Chris, could you, yeah, mute all, please?
Thank you.
Thanks. I, I actually typed in the wrong number. Wait a second, there's not five numbers in it.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Don't you ever on speed dial, Mr. Chair?
No, I did not. Two-two.
I don't even. Three-one-two-two, yeah, three-one-two-two. My typing skills are awful.
I think somebody just joined.
So Julie, have you joined us? She got to turn her computer off. So Julie, you'll need to turn your, uh, computers, uh, speakers off, otherwise it'll get an echo.
Okay, that should be it.
Your whiff is loud and clear. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
So at this particular time, I don't believe that any of the easements have been filed. Um, I would have to double check with the attorney that is working on it, but that's the information that I have right now. Okay, I have to have my speaker on all those. I can't hear you guys. Okay, did you respond?
Silent.
No, no, no response yet. Thank you for, uh, that, Julie, that is encouraging if they have not been filed or recorded. I will add, I did have a conversation with, uh, the consultant on Friday afternoon. Um, they seemed like they would be willing to, to go back. I don't know who actually made the contact with the, the landowners and had those conversations. I don't know if they need direction from the city to go back out and, and do that. Or maybe Julie, you can speak, speak to that.
So my understanding is that it's the city attorney that did all the paperwork in the easement. Um, I'm not sure about the trail portion, but it was never made clear to the city that the easements needed to be in the county's name.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Julie, this is Commissioner Johnson. As I, I'm sitting here looking at a template that my understanding is from Chris Bird that was handed to the city's engineer in re- you know, in regard to a document that would be presented. And I think it's fairly clear about those easements. I guess I'm not quite understanding where the miscommunication is on this.
Well, Chris never presented to the council, so I think that's where it came from. But I'm just speaking to what I think.
Julie, if you could do a fa- do us a favor and, and shut your, uh, computer, uh, speaker, mic off. Is it, we're getting an echo. Just, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Right.
Wherever we're at right now, I think the, the best thing is, is let's just get it back on the right track and look forward and, and, uh, instead of trying to figure out what happened, it, it clearly is wrong. And, uh, how, how is this going to affect the construction process? Can we start on the other side of the road or we do, or do we got to wait until all this is done?
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could start on the portion outside of the city limits, correct?
Yes, yes, but there was a portion that the contractor wanted to start north of the utility because there's some utilities that are currently being vacated. So it would affect their operation where they start, where they're planning to start.
Julie, do you have any kind of a timeline that, you know, that this could be fixed in? Do you?
So my understanding is that the attorney is already starting to change the wording to remove the eas- or excuse me, to remove the trail portion. And I believe that it has to go in front of the city council on June seventh to be approved, to be switched, or to be approved to put into the county's name. And I believe that's where we're at, at this moment. If we needed to do something, I would believe that we could, could do a special meeting with enough notice to move it faster. But realistically, you're only looking at Thursday or Friday instead of Monday. Um, and it's like I said, I don't believe that any of the easements have been filed. But I would need to double check that with the attorney that's working on it.
Mr. Chair, uh, Julie, would it be right to say that there's consensus from the city to be able to change this and move it to where we need to have it at this point? Is there going to be an issue?
It would, it would be my opinion that it was just a misunderstanding.
Okay, great.
I don't believe that it was done on purpose. I don't believe, I just believe that it was a total misunderstanding thinking that since we were paying for the easement, it was ours. And so I would believe that it would be a consensus to move to the correct way or the way that you're talking. But I can't speak for the council, obviously.
No, I understand. Thank you. I just wanted to get your opinion on that.
Mr. Chair. Chris, when is the construction supposed to start on this road?
Uh, to- tomorrow.
Okay. And if there's a delay, what's it going to cost the county?
Uh, that is unknown, uh, at this time. We haven't seen a request for additional delays. Has there been conversations with the contractor about changing their operations?
No, not, not at this time.
So.
So right now, we're going to lose four days of, uh, construction. And, and hopefully we don't have a lot of rain delays. Otherwise, it would, it could come back to haunt us for those four days of operations. Especially with the weather we're going to have now, of course. We have no idea what it's going to be.
Mr. Chair, Mark, just to confirm, you said that the contractor wanted to start on the northern end? Wanted to or needs to?
Wants to start, uh, it's like maybe approximately halfway through the project on the east side of the road and then work north into the city and then back down. Wants to complete the, the right half of the road and then come back down the west side is what they wanted to do. Because they're trying to avoid some utilities, uh, at the very beginning of the project, which is near one hundred and fifth. So I mean, they wouldn't be there, I would say, you know, the, on Thursday, you know, or Wednesday, they won't be in the city limits, but they're planning on working north and then coming back down the west side of the road.
Will we, well, I think what we need to do is just call the contractor and tell them this is the situation that we're in. Is it possible for you to do work outside of the city of Rice, um, until after next week? And just see where that conversation goes. They, uh, they obviously have other jobs that they've scheduled around too, to come to ours, starting this week. It's purely speculative on my part to say what that would, would cost. Mark, is this a calendar completion date project or a working day project?
Both.
It is both. And what I mean by that is when we, in the bidding proposal, we say, we're going to give you so many working days. Every time you show up to the project and work on the project, we're going to charge you a day. But we also want to have all the construction done by a certain date. So it's one of those things, if you, the contractor thought that they could bid it and get it done in one day, they could come in the day before the calendar completion date and do it. But, um, so there is those things. If we get, start bumping up against the completion date at the end of the summer, that's when, um, we start getting claims for needing additional time or need more money for our unit prices because they need to bring in additional crews compared to what they bid on and those kind of things.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm inclined to have, if you can have that conversation with the contractor and let them get going. That's, instead of holding them up.
Yep.
Okay. That's what we'll do. Whoa, we'll call the contractor and see if he can find some areas to work and still make progress on the project.
You need a motion or anything on this or just some consensus or what do you?
I was hoping at a minimum to get some consensus on, uh, how to proceed, but, um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we, do we know about how long it's going to take Rice to their end? So they got to have a meeting, whether that's a special one this week late or on Monday. But then to get out and get all this documentation and, and get everything going on that, and is that a week, two weeks?
I, I believe Julie said that their, their attorney was already working on it. So that would help out some.
I think it's more of coordinating, uh, just, this is just coming from our experience working with it. It's making contact with the landowners and say, when's the good time to meet? We need to meet again and discuss. So it's, it's coordinating with the public on those times. That's the huge unknown. I think maybe worst case is that the council approves, uh, on next Monday. If we could start next week, that would be probably, I wouldn't have as many concerns. It's after, if they wait till after the next council meeting, start making those contacts with the landowner again, that stretches that timeline out.
Okay.
So.
Because I would, I would assume that the contractor's going to want to know that timeline approximate to, to kind of keep on track with those utilities at one hundred and fifth and kind of stay on their project schedule.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. You got my consensus.
Mr. Chair.
Right.
Michelle, you have something to add to this?
Well, I was just asking, Mark, I believe that they could probably be working on documents this week, even without the county board's, or I'm sorry, city council's consensus. And then once they hopefully get consensus, then they can start recording it fairly quickly next week. But the council would be the last signatory on the documents. So they could have documents prepped in advance with a contingent or a conditional agreement with the landowners potentially.
Julie, did you hear that?
No.
Michelle, you're going to have to go to a microphone.
Well, I'll maybe call their attorney and speak with them.
Is that okay with you, Julie, if Michelle, our county attorney, calls your county attorney? City attorney?
Yeah, that would be fine. And like I said, I believe he's already working on those. And I think that the plan initially was is to get them to be read the way that they need to be read. So I don't think that that's an issue. I'll just have to reach out to the attorney to see if there's any way that we can either do a email vote on this with the council or a phone call vote with the council. And possibly, I was thinking possibly getting it moving through faster that way as well.
Well, I don't know, Chris, if, if they can get everything ready for Mon- next Monday night's approval, that shouldn't hinder us too much, should it?
Well, let's see if I can make our attorney cringe. But I said, the biggest concern with me is if we have some assurances from each one of those individual landowners that they are agreeing to the highway easement, I would feel more comfortable with letting our contractor loose in that area, even without recording documents. That's why I say make our attorney cringe. But I think that's the big piece. If we have some assurances from the landowners that they're not going to contest it being a highway easement versus a 75-foot trail easement, that, that's my big issue. That's, that's what we want to have some assurances on.
Mr. Chair, Chris, no, I don't want you going into the city limits without signed documentation.
Okay.
That's going to put the liability back on us.
Yeah, that could come back to haunt us.
Yes.
Okay. So I, I think the consensus was to go ahead and see if the contractor can
Yeah.
start somewhere else and work towards that. And if the city of Rice gets everything in line for, at the latest date next Monday evening, we'll go from there.
Sure, yep.
What happens if, what happens if they don't?
I, well, I, well, this is what I'll say. Based on what I've heard today, if we do not get that, we're not going to, and they can't find any work to do outside of the right of way, things come to a halt. And next board meeting, we'll be discussing it again.
Mr. Chair, if things come to a halt and we have to start paying a penalty, I would be more, it would, it should be thrown towards the city if we would have to pay a penalty at the end because of the issues that occurred. And if it postpones our construction for two weeks, two weeks is a long time.
Mr. Chair, if I could speak.
Yes.
The issue with this is that we weren't notified as far in advance as we should have been. So some of these delays fall back onto the county.
I will have to respectfully disagree. Wednesday, January 27, 2021, an email was sent to the city clerk and the city engineer, Les Matafi, and another consultant, Cliff Allen, with these documents and scans of the parcels or the owner and encumbrance reports that were necessary. That's where my department has this issue of that, of not being notified. The clerk's correct. I did not present before a city council, but in January, these documents were being shared with the city. I would have been happy to come to a city council meeting and, and speak to that. But I believe in good faith, we were sharing the documents necessary and providing instructions on how to acquire this right of way as late as January of this, this year, so.
So my question then would be, Chris, was it clearly stated to them that it needed to be in the county's name? Or were these done as examples of how this could be, could be done?
Yeah, a phone, here, I'll go back. So my assistant, Les Matafi, the city engineer, and myself had a phone conference on December, the, the week between Christmas and New Year's. We had.
It was a Friday when I couldn't attend.
Yeah, uh, no, it would have been, it probably was Monday or Tuesday of that week. Why is my calendar not updating? And we instructed him that we would be providing him documents of how the easements should read. And I apologize, it was, it was almost a month later that we sent that email. But I fully believe that the consultant, acting as the city engineer, was aware of the required documents and required language.
Julie clearly just stated you had the conversation and you didn't send out the documents until a month later.
Still January. January.
In January, yep, January 27th, 8:47 a.m.
And, and Mr. Chair, right, just to jump in here. If we're talking a week or two to get all this stuff done right now, I'm considering January very much appropriate timing on all of this. Well, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't there was a change in the, in the person that was doing the, the engineer part? You know, and I know that some of, some other entities down there had the same trouble with this change that happened from Matafi's group.
Correct.
You know, so.
But the other, the other portion of it is, I mean, we're going through the motions now. All this back work has been done trying to contact people and set up meetings with the, with the landowners. So to say that this could be done in a week's time is incorrect. Though where we're at right now, to change the paperwork to the landowners is possibly, could possibly be done in a week's time, but there has been a lot of footwork prior to this that has taken quite a bit longer than just the week that we're talking about now.
I didn't quite get that, Julie. You mean that?
One of the chairpeople said that if they can do it in a week, then we have ample time to get this done prior to if the email went out in January. But what I'm saying is that since that time the email went out, we have been working with getting ahold of the people, contacting the correct people for the land ownership, making the arrangements, trying to, to get the easements from them. So to say that it's going to be, if it could have been done in a week's time, that's incorrect.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I think we need to move on. I, I, I mean, we're debating over things that could maybe happen. There might not, there not, might not even be a change. So I think we need to let Mr. Byrd do his job, get, get in char- get in contact with the contractor, see what we can do to mitigate the, the, you know, so we don't even have to debate this later on.
Right.
I think that's in everybody's best, best interest.
Well, and to speak for the city, we thought out about this on, I believe it was Thursday, that it was an issue. And we have been working on it to try to correct it since. Unfortunately, there was a holiday that fell in, in between them. But we are working and have done the first thing that we addressed this morning, once everyone was back at work.
Okay. And I had a conversation with you, I believe, on Thursday too, Julie.
Correct.
Okay, so I think, I think we got some consensus for you. And we know the city's working to rectify the issue, to get it back on track. And I'm sure they'll do the best they can to get it as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
So, thanks, Julie. Yeah, Julie.
Thank you.
So is that good enough for you, Chris, or do you need a consensus about moving?
I think we, I feel like we've got direction. We need to have a conversation with the contractor this afternoon. Maybe we can meet out on, on site and find locations and just explain the situation.
Yeah.
We'll go from there.
Just throwing it out there, we do have Chris coming in tomorrow.
That's correct. We do have a committee of the whole to talk about our five-year road construction program.
After you talk, so.
Yeah, I can provide an update at that point, so.
Okay. And I guess you're up for the next.
So, all right. So the next item I have on the agenda is to award a construction contract. So this was, this is for project SP 005-070-008 and SP 049-070-031. If recall, this is a project that we opened bids last month and we did not receive valid bids because the bidders did not follow the bidding instructions. So we re-advertized it and re-led it. This is the permanent pavement markings on our newly reconstructed County Road 78. That's why it has that SP 049 project number, because Morrison County has a, a small financial contribution to this project. This project is being funded 90% with Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program dollars. And then Morrison County and Benton County is splitting the last 10%. So we have 5% on this. So I'm recommending awarding a construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder, AAA striping service.
Chris, I got a question. Is this then where they put the rumble strips in?
This does not have rumble strips on it, no.
Six inch.
So this is six inch, is it ground in?
Ground and went reflective epoxy.
Yeah, so we're actually going to grind a little groove at the edge of the 12-foot lane and then spray the epoxy. It's an actual epoxy. It's a two-part material stripe in that. And it has larger and different glass bead elements. So it's designed to reflect the, your headlights back through water. So these don't have rumbles in them.
Okay.
But it's a higher quality pavement marking than just the traditional highway paint.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the contract as presented.
I'll second.
Well, it's been made second to approve the contract as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried.
All right. And I think I'm still up. Yes, all right. Well, I wanted to take some time today and present the 2020 Highway Department Annual Report. And this is great timing because we, we just adopted budget guidelines for going through the, the next year. And this will give you a snapshot of our, basically all of our accounting at the Highway Department for the year ending of 2020. And I do have some additional documents that as I read through this, I, I wanted to have in here. It's just an additional map, so, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do like the maps anyway.
Yeah.
You like, those are okay on paper?
Those are okay on paper.
So, all right, I, I don't have it up on the screen. It is kind of a, a large document. But I just wanted to highlight some things to you. If you open up the, the front cover, there's just some comments from me as the county engineer about how the previous year went. There's enough been said about how 2020 went, but all in all, in summary, it's been a great year for the Highway Department, I'll say. By most accounts, transportation and highway workers were deemed essential. And in most regards, our work carried on just like it did before the pandemic. And, and our staff, our Highway Department did a phenomenal job, I thought. But I want to direct your attention to, at the bottom of the page, it's listed as page number one, is basically a quick summary of our highway expenses. And it's broken out in our CASA mileage and our CASA municipal mileage, which is our CASA routes in the cities of under 5,000 population, like the city of Rice, city of Foley, city of Gilman, and then our county roads. I do want to point out that we have 209.65 miles of CASA regular, 15.55 miles of CASA municipal. Add that up, that's 225.2 miles of CASA roads. You jump down to the county roads and we have 226.2 miles of county roads. So we do have one more mile of county road than we do have CASA road. Thus, the desire on our part to have some turnback discussions with some of our cities. All of that 226 miles of county road, 121.2 miles of that are paved, leaving 105 miles of gravel road. But if you, you look at their CASA regular, our maintenance costs, $1.7 million. That's what we get as part of an annual allotment from the gas tax formula, that's our state aid money, as well as the municipal. And then the regular, the maintenance cost on county roads, you can think of that as a levy. That's what pays for, for that, is the, the county road maintenance. If you flip the page to page two, this is where we list all of our construction projects, a quick summary of our construction projects. And this is where I want to point out where our highway accounting is kind of based on an accrual basis, where our county budget is based on a cash basis for that year. Very rarely does a road construction project start the planning, go to bidding, construct it, and finish it all in the same calendar year. So we have to do accrual accounting to account for construction projects spanning multiple years. So on these construction projects listed on this page are the costs actually incurred in the calendar year 2020. So there may be some projects in there that you don't recognize. And that could be because they, we issued the final construction payment in that year or something similar. That is continued, and these costs are continued through page 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3. So you can see all the different project numbers there. On 2.2, it starts to pointing out the equipment that we purchased in 2020. The next several pages, starting at page three, is our financial statement, our liabilities and our receivables, with the fund balance being displayed on page 3.1. Starting at page four, just a lot more numbers that I won't go into a lot of detail. But yeah, these are our accounts receivable for the end of 2020, money that was still owed to us at the end of 2020. We'll skip a couple pages here. Page five at the bottom of page, it says, it shows number five at the bottom of the page. This is our township road allotment. This is gas tax money that is distributed to each of the 87 counties to further distribute to the several townships within their counties. So you can see in 2020, there was $208,000, a little over $208,000 that was distributed to the several townships in our county. On page six, the next page on the right is end of year inventory. I just thought that was kind of interesting just to point out that the end of 2020, we had about $139,000 in inventory. But if you look at that, it's, it's split up between tires and tubes and chains, cutting edges for all of our snowplow equipment and, and motor graders, various things like diesel fuel and oil, crack filler, gravel material in stockpile. And when you look at each one of those things kind of individually, those seem very reasonable to me as the county engineer at the end of the year. For example, we have gravel material in stockpile, about $12,000 worth in a gravel stockpile. That does not seem unreasonable to me at the end of the year to have that available at the beginning of the year, the following year. That would be the purpose of having some things in inventory, so you have it available the beginning of the next year. Flip the page to page seven, there's a list of all of our liabilities at the end of 2020, meaning things that we were invoiced in, for work done in 2020, but hadn't paid out until 2021. All right. If you flip the page one more time, you'll start to see, you turn your book sideways. Here is a list of all of our fixed assets for the, the Highway Department, mostly comprised of, of our heavy equipment. Starting at that page, which is actually page eight, it starts with our dump trucks. These would be our primary snow removal equipment. Anyway, I just want to point out a couple things. On the far left column is the unit number. So if we just look at the top line, we see that that's unit 215. Now, a couple of things that that tells me, that's because based on the way we number equipment, that piece of equipment was purchased in 2002, it was actually the 15th piece of equipment purchased that year. And that was a 2003, so it was purchased in 2002, meaning the model year was 2003 Volvo tandem truck. That's, that's one of our oldest snowplow trucks. The next column after the description is the original cost. I think that's significant. I think that's significant. Back in 2002, that was a $138,000 machine. Now, if we follow this, this column down, the most recent plow truck that we purchased was at the bottom of that page, unit 1803, a 2019 Mack. That was a $256,000 snowplow truck. So over a period of 16 years, they've really increased in, in price, new price, new purchase price. If we go back up to that top line quickly, I just want to show the far right, to show our yearly depreciation and the year ending balance. We're trying to follow the county's fiscal policy on our depreciation schedule. There's a recommended depreciation schedule for equipment. And that's why I know our 2002 equipment has fully depreciated by the year 2020. All right. All right, if we flip a, a couple more pages, I want to direct your attention to what's page 12. This is get you some more interested, although I find all this, this interesting. There's a lot of information in this report. So I'm just trying to hit some highlights. Starting on page 12 is our maintenance costs for our road. So if you turn your book sideways again, you'll see the different columns there for CASA regular, CASA municipal, and county roads. And then there's intermediate columns where we've actually broken that cost out per mile. So I want to show kind of halfway down the page for CASA regular roads. So these are CASA highways outside of the city of Foley, outside of city of Rice, outside of city Gilman. We spent about $8,8100, let's say, per mile maintaining our roads in 2020. Our municipal miles were a little bit higher, 9,500. But when we look at it, we're, we're pretty close to 50/50 CASA county road miles. We spent $8,300 per mile on our county roads. To me, that tells me that we're spending almost just about as much on our CASA as we are on our, our county roads, which kind of makes sense if we're half of our roads are county roads, we should be spending about half of our expenses on that. But the next following pages is basically the documentation that backs up page 12. Because we break it out in funds. I might have mentioned it before that our accounting software and our timesheets, we have many different codes that we expect our employees to put on their timesheet to track where their costs are. And starting at page 13 and continuing, that's where those, those timesheet codes and cost accounties come, come out. Because we have routine maintenance, minor service repair, clean culverts, ditches and bridges, brush and weed control. And maybe about three quarters of the way down the page, I want to direct your attention to snow and ice removal, we're on page 13 still. This is, this is something that's always kind of interesting to look at this year. Adding up those costs for CASA regular, CASA municipal, and county roads, in 2020, we spent almost $589,000 of snow removal. Furthermore, breaking that out in per mile, we spent about $1,700 per mile on our CASA roads for snow and ice removal, about $1,500 per mile on our CASA municipal roads, and then our county roads, only $891 per mile. And you think about why that might be, remember, almost half of our county roads are gravel roads, where we're not putting materials down, we're not putting ice down in our gravel roads. Actually, our snow removal policy is we may not always plow a gravel road on the same day that we plow a paved road. So that's where you can kind of see, yeah, we're not spending as much per mile on our county roads as we are CASA roads on the snow and ice removal category. What else? All right. We flip a couple more pages, we get to page 14. So we further broken this out per mile, almost to the, the mile of road to, for all these different, different codes again. So if you get a call from a constituent, and let's just say somebody's claiming that we're not maintaining their, their section of road as much as the other ones, well, we can sit down, we can take a look at our previous annual reports and see how much we spent on their road. Something is interesting, I thought, when we get to our county roads, where we have some numbered county roads that are paved and gravel, we can even get to the point where comparing our ma, uh, routine maintenance costs on a bituminous road to our routine maintenance costs on a gravel road. And that's where you'd find this information on these, these several, several tables here. So a lot of numbers being thrown at you, and I, I'm not going to bore everybody by going through all these, but just suffice it to know that I could probably find some information for you if you get a question about maintenance costs or you just want to sit down and look at these maintenance costs, we could sit down and look at these, these together. All right, we're getting close to the end here. But towards the end of the book, I just want to point out, starting on page 17, is a list of all the construction projects. So we had been talking about maintenance projects. So they start out with our state aid projects. Then, when you get to page 19, is our county projects. And then beyond that is our special projects, page 21. So you can see what we spent on each numbered construction project in the calendar year of 2020. Once again, if there's a project on here that you don't recognize, it could be that we did some planning for a future upcoming project, or we had actually completed the construction the previous year, but we need, made the final payment to the contractor in this calendar year. Now, if we skip over to page 21, these are kind of like special, special projects, I'll call them. And I just want to point out here, this, this list on page 21 is relatively short. But anticipate this list growing in future years, because this is where our ditch projects would show up in future years, is under, under this, this table here. So this may change from year to year based on things like ditch projects that we, we do through our engineering department. All right. Lastly, I just want to point you, at the very back of this document is maps. And maybe this is being the most beneficial to anybody, if you're like me, you like seeing visual. The first map you come to is the maintenance completed in 2020. And there's a lot of colors on there, a lot of different symbols, but it just shows all the various things, a lot of the major things that Mark Ebner and his maintenance folks do, from replacing culverts to using the Dura-Patcher machine and patching larger cracks, to the roads that we just did crack filling, the gravel roads where we added gravel material to the surface, shoulder and rumble strips, frost boils. You can even see the X marks all where we, where maintenance dug up frost boils in the spring. You turn the, the page to the next map, this is what Mark Lloyd Holt and his crew did as far as construction projects in 2020. So you see the big projects like 78, we finished that in 2020. We did CASA 12 and CASA 2, did the reclaims on 4, 6, and 8. They show up on this map. And as, as I was, oh, the next map would be what we were planting, planting, planning for the current calendar year in 2021. And then the additional map that I gave you today, when I got through this, I seemed like there was something that was missing, although the costs are reflected in the tables. I didn't have a graphical representation. So the map that I added here is our seasonal overlay map. So this is something that you could look at. In addition to the maintenance completed map, is the roads that we did during our maintenance overlay budget. So as an engineer, we like numbers, but we also know that we tend to get boring sometimes when we talk about numbers. So hopefully I didn't bore you. But I did share with you a lot of information of our expenses in 2020. I do want to, there's a lot of things going on, but I do want to thank my highway accountant, Missy Paulson, for putting this together. She works hard all year round, tracking this, correcting us on our timesheets when we didn't code something correctly, and working with me closely on presenting this information that I think is useful to me as the county highway engineer, and that could be useful to you as commissioners and, and to the public. So. That's it that I have about the annual report, but I'll have you answer any questions.
Questions or comments? I guess I had a couple of things. So Chris, do we lock in like our diesel and stuff like that for a year, or do we buy it on the open market?
We buy it on the open market. Ebner's here, he's the one that does that. When it comes time to our tanks, he actually gets an alarm in his office when the tanks are getting low, I think, that beeps. And then so that morning, he calls, I don't know, what is it, about a dozen, five, five different suppliers in our area and gets the best price that we can that day. He calls them up and you give them till, what, 9:30 or so? He sets a time that they need to call him back with their best price per gallon. And then we go with that supplier that gives us that best price per gallon on that day. So we don't lock it in for a whole year, but.
So when the alarm goes off, how much lead time do you have that's left in that?
We get roughly 1,000 to 1,500 gallons in the tank when the alarm goes off. I watch it a little bit closer before the alarm goes off.
I was going to say, that's not very much to have on hand because on any Pacific day or, or, you know, or do your, do your suppliers ever come to you and say, you know, we're going to have a fuel increase on Thursday, I suggest that you take a tank, because you're by, by the tanker, right?
Yes, and I do have my connections.
Okay.
When Mark walks in that price for the day, it's, he tells them to deliver it that day, right?
Correct. Usually it's the day we do at eight, we open quotes at eight o'clock, I close them at nine, and I award them at nine, probably nine, 10. And that gives them time to see what the market's doing as far as bringing it fuel in that day, or else once in a while, they'll ask me, say, hey, the market's kind of all over the board, might be able to get you a better price if we can wait till tomorrow and deliver. So then I need to tell all them that they have that opportunity to do that.
Because my supplier always calls, you know, like we had an increase here a couple weeks ago, and he says, you might want to, you know, purchase a little more fuel because we're going to have a increase coming forth here in, you know, a week to 10 days.
That's like when the East Coast, they were, you know, no gasoline. The media took it and ran with it, that the price of fuel is going to go crazy. I already got on the phone, made a few phone calls, and they said, no, the media's just pushing it, don't worry about it.
Yeah. You know, and we're going to see a significant fuel increase this year, you know, with your usage.
Mr. Chair, Chris or Mark, do you typically, have you ever contracted in the past?
No, never done it. I know Sherburne County does, they kind of like, ah, some days they like it, some days they don't. I specifically like it this way, because we have more control over it that way.
So do you get to buy off-road or on-road fuel?
We buy all off-road, and then that's where the computer system's set up and all the unit numbers are in. So like all the trucks will get taxed, and Missy takes care of that at the end of the month, when we do our end-of-month inventory. And then we pay that tax.
Correct, okay. Because, you know, last, like last summer and last fall, there were significant savings if we would have bought for a year in advance. You know, we were down, off-road diesel was selling in the neighborhood of 70 cents a gallon for a tanker delivered.
And this county is pretty fortunate, because there's not too many counties that can do that anymore, where we can pay the tax later.
Okay.
Normally, it's you pay it all upfront and then try to get it back later, so that's something we never want to lose.
Right.
Yeah, interesting. You know, if we'd locked in a price at the beginning of last year, we probably would have been regretting it as fuel prices dropped. But then, like you said, if you could lock it in at the end of the year. So you win or lose. I like the system we have set up, because I feel like on that day when we need fuel, we're getting the best available price that we can get that day, so.
I guess I just don't trust the suppliers when they know that you're calling with 1,500 gallons left.
Honestly, I do have a good relationship with a couple suppliers, that if it was wintertime and something happened where there's a drought, I can get fuel anytime.
Okay.
If I needed it at 10 o'clock at night, I'll get it.
Okay.
So that's kind of the relationship I have. I'm not, never worried about that.
I, I wasn't worried about getting fuel, I was more worried about paying, the price you're paying.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris, thank you very much for going over all these numbers. They got a little daunting as went through the packet. And Commissioner Hein and I talked about that beforehand, so it makes a lot of sense as you go through it, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. If you, you get into it later, you having trouble falling asleep and you start reading it, you can do that and call me the next morning.
Oh, the next morning.
So, Chris, do we have our maintenance truck all, the one we purchased, we're going to purchase, is that all up and running?
The box is being built, the, the mechanic box is being built right now, right?
We should see it, we should, we should be receiving it in October.
Okay, gotcha.
That, yeah, that's a good point. A lot of times when we get budget to purchase a piece of equipment, we purchase it after the first year, and sometimes it doesn't come in till the fall of the year, so. We have to anticipate using the old piece of equipment for almost the next year as well, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
And the crack filler machine?
Yes.
Give us an update.
Oh, very good, yeah. We actually, we sold it on auction. We brought in $13,000, so it sold on auction. I think it did better than I anticipated it, it doing, so. They came and picked it up already, right?
Friday.
Friday, so the auction closed just the day before there, so, right?
Tuesday.
So, yeah. Go on.
Mr. Chair, do we know what the payoff is on the one we're leasing or renting?
Yep.
Haven't heard that one yet, we're still waiting on Broadway.
Yeah, we're still waiting with the vendor for the final payoff amount, so.
Anything else?
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Mark and Mark.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Don't leave yet.
So then we'll go to Commissioner meeting updates?
I can start, Mr. Chair. So I only had, I only had two of them. I had one with La Library, and I contacted Monte and Steve Stang because they're in need of a new copier machine. So they're working through that process. And then I had an annual performance review for Tammy Bear, Bear, Berry, for Career Force. That's all I had, thank you.
I think the only thing I had was our Foley fiber, or the, the fiber update. And I think that's moving right along. I mean, we, we met with a provider and, and they had some good ideas, and I, I think, I think it's moving along, we'll be talking about that again.
All right, I can go at a few additional meetings. I know Commissioner Pop was with me on these, so I'm not going to get into real detail.
You can do.
Solid Waste was actually one of my first times I was able to be with them. Just a couple of highlights that I picked up out of this. Both Benton and Sherburne have submitted their solid waste plans, MPCA, so they're waiting for approval on that. One number I didn't know is there's a 35% recycling goal from the state of Minnesota coming up, so that's, that was a good number. Centra Care is starting composting sites, so that, that was an additional information there, too. As Commissioner Kapinski said, we did have our broadband meeting with the city on the 24th of May. And I would agree, things are, are moving along there, we're collecting a lot of information to be able to move forward. Also, on the 27th, we had our planning commission meeting, you did see that in your agenda today on that preliminary plat, which was unanimously approved by the planning commission for the Fulton County Board's approval. So I think that kind of covers it quickly.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I got one question for Commissioner Johnson. So WATAB has a planning commission, tune out planning commission board?
That's what I understand, yes.
And how well does that work?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Oh, okay.
We're not typically involved with them.
Okay.
So Roxanne may be a better.
Their recommendations come to you guys or to Roxanne, and Roxanne brings that to you guys, or?
Well, I don't know that I've seen that.
Okay.
With their own planning board there, to my knowledge.
Still with us.
Roxanne, maybe you can help me out with that with WATAB. I, I don't know that we necessarily see that all the time.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I was wondering how WATAB's planning, planning commission and the county commission, and the county's planning commission work or oversight? So do we oversee anything after they approve something, or once they approve it, are it's good to go?
No, it still needs county approval. So it goes through them and then it comes to us. We still have the final approval.
And typically, Roxanne, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of one of the steps we talk about when we're in our public hearing, are there other governmental entities, that type of, you know, give some suggestions or ideas. So that is something, I, I understand your question now, and she answered it, thank you.
I'm usually not very clear at times.
Thank you. Thanks, Roxanne. That is all I had.
All right, Beth?
I had the recap annual meeting, and they had some years of service awards. Their expenses were down due to COVID. They had like 400,000 less people that were served, and so they have some, their equity is higher this year. They're doing pretty good. They're doing pretty good, but they're planning on getting more done this year.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, just a little bit more on, on the tri cap meeting. Thank Commissioner Johnson for being there to oversee some, because I'm the chair this year, and sometimes I get a little, you know, as soon as we go back in person, which we are at our next meeting, will be a little different. The West Central sanitation is, uh, gonna move forward on the ag plastics. They're gonna come into this county.
Yes.
And, I mean, Waste Management virtually dropped the ball on this. They want nothing to do with it, they want out of the contract. Um, it looks, you know, like, uh, from what I see is that they just wanna to have the station in Sock Center, bail it, and get rid of, you know, and sell the product. Um, so there, sometime in June, it looks like they'll have routes and, and rates, and everybody's there. Um, and then the solid waste advisory did approve.
Yes.
Uh, one, one score grant and additional of, of what, five others or six others?
Yes, we did an additional five or six, up to a certain dollar amount, not knowing what was gonna happen, but that's pretty good information that they're gonna wanna take.
There's so much catch-up.
Right.
I mean, I, I, somebody out, out in that, what part of the county, I said, well, you can get a thirty-yard dumpster, whatever, and he goes, how about two? He's got that much.
So it's first come, first served?
Yeah.
One per individual, not two?
Burnage, okay.
Or, or, or business.
Yeah, the other part that I got out of that is that they're gonna start this organic collection for a digester. Um, they, they got a grant for this, where they're gonna take food from schools and, and stuff like that to generate, I believe it's electricity, right?
Yes.
So that's gonna go forward, too, um, as they move forward. I think our, our, what is it, Tim Oswald seems to be, have a good handle. We met with him last Friday. Um, out here at the county, just, yeah, well, he had a contract to sign and something else, so that's, that's, looks like they're on the right track there. After our last, uh, board meeting, we did have, I did have library. Um, we did approve the, budget for, the preliminary budget for twenty-two. Um, it looks like Benton County will have somewheres around the eleven thousand dollar decrease in cost.
Great.
It's just based on, you know, the, the, the formula that's there. We didn't wanna change the formula to make every county neutral, so, um, in order to get counties in line, that's, we just, we're just kinda on the lucky end of that. One of these years, we might not be. I think it's been three or four years, we've been pretty lucky on that. Um, they did not approve opening for more hours. It was a request that came across to have more hours across the board at every library there was, and, uh, it had some discussion, and when it came down to it, they did not approve that. They, um, usage and, um, member service was down, you know, basically pretty drastically in twenty-twenty. They like to see a year's worth of back to normal before they approve more open hours. I did, a couple of counties had, had increases, and we'll go in person, another one, we're going in person in June. There's gonna be no more virtual. They don't have the ability to do both virtual and in-person, so it's gonna be either you show up, or you're not gonna be part of that meeting. And then we had, Monty was there, we had BEP meeting on Thursday. Lot of talk about, you know, the rescue stuff, and what's gonna be the role. They made some recommendations that'll come before the board here on what they think should be done.
I just saw an ad, I think, but one thing that did come out of that meeting, it seemed to be the consensus, is that the BEP does not see the need for another round of business assistance grants.
Correct, yeah. They just think that that's probably, you know, and, and that might free up some time for Amanda and her summer intern to do a few other things. I mean, that took a lot of time, the last.
Absolutely.
Last school rounds here, to get them out, so. Yeah, it was quite lengthy meeting, um, you know, a lot of good things. They did unanimous support for, um, broadband in the county. They wanna see the county move forward on that part of it, so.
What was the, actually, there was a motion on this issue?
Yeah, I, I believe the motion was, the, the motion was that the county should, uh, now do a study to determine, you know, where in our county do we have the underserved, unserved needs or areas? I think, if I recall correctly, that was the motion. And I think they didn't, they didn't trust the providers to provide you with this information. Um, I, I think some of them are gonna go out and ask that, you know, a couple of townships have already said, we're going out, and we're gonna see if we can do a survey of just the township, to see if our township or this township is serviced well enough. They don't, they don't trust the providers anymore, you know, Century Lake, you know, some of them. So that was where that went. So it was a really, um, good meeting and a lot of input. These people have a passion that are on this board, so, uh, to make it work, so. And that was all that I had.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one quick highlight I missed in my notes in regards to Tri County. Tim Oswald did talk about Stride Academy's developing curriculum for recycling, that he's working out with them, so he's got a lot of things rolling. And, uh, that was good to hear, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also want to mention, yesterday was the dedication memorial service.
Yeah.
Over here, and that was really nice. Of course, I didn't see some of you guys there, even though you said you were there. Or nor did I see Bath, but she was there.
Yeah, I did see Bath.
Very nice ceremony.
Yep, yeah.
We figured, what, two, two-hundred-and-fifty people were there? Very good ceremony.
Yeah, it was, uh, well-attended, and it's, it's a classy-looking deal over there, and very classy.
I think we're very well honored to be able to have that on our county property over here.
Okay, um, then we have Commissioner Concerns, discussion on parking along County Road Three from Commissioner Heinen.
Okay, I brought this up because of one event they had along, a while ago, where they had parking on both sides of the road. Sheriff Troy Heck on?
He is.
Hey Troy, so I seen you put up the, uh, no parking signs, or somebody did, on the north side, and some on the south side. I was not around this weekend, I'm assuming everything went fine, because their parking area was dry, correct?
I haven't heard that things went poorly, so I'm assuming things went well, and yes, that was our office that posted the north side of the road, no parking.
Okay, thank you. So I brought this up because it creates a, a, an issue, public safety issue, when they're parking on both sides of the road. Uh, and I just wanted input from both Troy, uh, Chris, anybody about this issue, other than what I've been seeing. Before I'll, before we go into that, Mark, I believe you guys already approved the minute, the township, okay?
The joint planning board.
Joint planning board did? Okay, so the day, they only, they approved three special event permits, correct?
Correct, and they can only park on the south side, not the north side.
Okay, and that's what you guys proposed to them?
That's correct.
Okay, so I was just wanting further discussion of what, what the board, Troy, and if Chris has anything to say about it.
And it sounds like we got it covered, right? Or not?
Well, I, I'll be honest with you, if it's up to me, there'd be no parking on the shoulders of the road at all, with a fifty-five mile an hour speed limit going all the way through that whole area. I mean, there was no event, there's no event signage up, there's nothing. Uh, when you park on both sides of the road, you know, that creates a very big issue.
May I ask a question? So to restrict parking for future events, will the sheriff's office need to continue posting the temporary no parking signs? Question for Troy.
Unless or until we pass or amend our no parking ordinance, making that a permanent no parking area, yes, we will need to continue to make use of those temporary parking restrictions. In my brief conversation I had with one of the, um, of the event organizers, it sounds like they, in their estimation, have two to three of these events each year that, uh, would probably necessitate having to have those parking restrictions. Otherwise, I believe they typically are able to contain their parking vehicles on the property.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Heinen, and I, I think, uh, parking on both sides of the road is, is completely, uh, I mean, that's a, that's a hazard in itself, uh, and even, even on one side of the road, I, I, I've always looked at shoulders as being a place where your vehicle breaks down and you go, and people get ticketed after a certain amount of time. I just, I fear for a fifty-five mile an hour zone, and then a kid running out in between two vehicles. So, uh, that would be my concern. I'm glad that, uh, the sheriff's department did put up no parking on at least one side of them at this point.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, uh, Troy, did you receive anything yet from that business about the events that are gonna be happening this upcoming weekend, about having, uh, police force there?
No, we've not, uh, we've not been asked to contract with them. This last weekend, they did ask if we would have some extra controls in the area, and we did do that, including, um, I saw at least one time our deputy walked through the facility.
Mr. Chair, are, is there gonna be parking, um, in, on the other side, in the, where the grass or whatever is on the north side of the road, is there gonna be north-side parking? Not on the highway, but north of there?
I don't know, is that their property?
Maybe Mark knows the answer to that. Yes, he does own that property, bought that parcel that's northwest, corner of Twenty-Fifth Avenue, Golden Spike Road. Um, at this time, there is nothing to be said about any parking over there. I know that's something that the Joint Powers Board needs to work on with him yet, as far as that. I know we did express to him when he first originally brought it up about, uh, overflow parking slash camping. Um, we were not opposed of the camping, but we weren't against of overflow parking, but at the same time is that we did, I did, uh, recommend to him to talk to Chris Byrd, the county engineer, as far as any traffic control or anything for County Road Three that would pertain to that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so in, in further conversation, and yes, I had a conversation with Sheriff Troy Heck on Thursday about this. I also reached out to Michelle, and I also re- reached out to Monty to see about liability issues, if we do allow parking on the shoulder. Michelle?
Yeah, so because the county isn't creating the hazard, we shouldn't be liable for any negligence that's taken on part of a private citizen. Uh, the best that we can do at this time is kind of what Troy has indicated, is, you know, temporarily mark spots that we believe could be more dangerous, and then in the future, consider amending our no parking ordinance to restrict that particular area. Um, but as long as the county isn't creating the hazard, really, we shouldn't have any troubles, and if the county is trying to mitigate the issues and is out there, and something occurs because of a mitigation effort, we do have some liability protections through immunity. So, you know, we do discretionary decisions all the time at the county level, and if we are documenting and proceeding under good policy, we should be okay. And I do know that Monty did receive back a response from our MCIT agent, and he kinda reiterated that as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a follow-up on that, Michelle, if, if they did have a bunch of campers on that side and had a special event, we could, um, from a county level, um, uh, make a stipulation that there has to be some sort of traffic control to get those people across the road, or could we not?
We don't, the only, uh, the only piece in our jurisdiction is really that county road. We do have special event permits, if you're going to be impacting the roadway, and you're going to have to shut down a portion of it, or the entire right away, then at that point, we could probably direct some of that. Unfortunately, because the jurisdiction for events is with that joint planning board, that would really be up to them to make sure that that's provided for. But if we see an issue, you know, certainly law enforcement can go out there and try to mitigate that issue.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so then, Mark, I know they've already got three special events signed. Uh, that, that is something you might want to talk to Sheriff Troy Heck about, if you need additional parking or anything. And then my next question is, Sheriff Heck, is this something we should probably address after this year to see how it went? Or is this something we should address earlier, or wait to see if they have a, their next special event, I was told, is supposed to be up to three thousand people, I believe? So that's gonna create a lot of vehicles, so I'm, I'm just concerned.
Pardon me. Well, we, we will continue to work with the event planners to find out when these events are coming up, and when we do have one of these big events coming up, we'll continue to post one side of the road with no parking, so we hopefully eliminate that, uh, hazard of people crossing the road to get to their car. At, as to the correct path forward, um, I, I, I guess I'll, I'll leave that to the wisdom of the board. I, I think that, from everything I know right now, it sounds like the event happened without much, uh, concern for safety, and I'll speak with some of my staff that worked over the weekend and find out if they had any concerns based on what they saw, but at, based on what I know right now, I, I think that we've addressed it satisfactorily.
Okay, well, I'm good with that, but I'll be the first to tell you, if there is an incident to where an accident happens, I will be the first in front of this board to shut down the no parking on both sides of that road.
Correct, yeah, I think you'd have support from that, probably have support from Minden Township, too. Kinda got a little in there with Minden.
Just kinda.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had to talk about.
All right, hey, thanks, that's good information to bring forward. Set committee of the halls?
We have no new ones.
Really?
Yeah, I just wanna mention for our new board members, this will be your first AMC District Five meeting, it's gonna be in Malacca. And as I recall correctly, you could, you're certainly welcome to arrive about eight, and they usually have coffee and donuts, and then the program starts about eight fifteen, and then it finishes with a boxed lunch, or who knows, it might be a, a catered buffet lunch, we don't know, but anyway, that's how it, it wraps up. And I'll, I'll get a, a county report, uh, to our board chair for that. Cause each county, they'll go around, and each county gives a, a report on what's going on in their, in their counties.
So are, you're gonna be gone at that time?
I will be gone that day, yeah. But I'll get you, I'll get you a report, so.
Right.
Yep, but of that, we don't have any new ones, nope.
All right, hey, thanks.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Anything else to come before the board? Then I'll adjourn. We'll take a fifteen-minute, or five-minute break, not fifteen. We'll take a fifteen minute, or five minute break, not fifteen.
Thank you.
Forward, I will call the Benton County Ditch Authority to meeting on the drainage repair report on hearing for ditch number three. Chris?
Looks like you had a couple items before that, though, some minutes to approve.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Approve or amend the agenda and then approve some minutes from May?
So, um, I don't have that before me. Approve or amend the, the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Most been made, and second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved, approve or amend the minutes of Tuesday, May fourth, 2021? I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Been moving and seconding to approve the minutes from May fourth of 2021, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I'll abstain because I wasn't here. Now we'll conduct a public hearing on the ditch number three regarding the redetermination of benefits.
All right.
Of the report from our county engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So the matter before you today regards County Ditch Number Three. So back in February of 2020, we received a petition or a request to repair County Ditch Number Three. That was brought to the Drainage Authority at their February eighteenth, 2020 meeting. And that was accepted, the repair petition was accepted. At that same meeting, the ditch authority authorized that a repair report be completed. That engineer's repair report was completed and filed with the Drainage Order Authority on May fourth of this year, 2020, May fourth, 2020. All right? I have that up on the screen, this is the, the repair report on the screen now. So repair report, since we received a repair petition, we hired Houston Engineering to survey the ditch and determine the current condition of the ditch. They used aerial photographs, field survey data with elevations that was collected in October of 2020. And this survey data established the existing conditions and the elevation of the bottom of the ditch as it was in October. We have no as-built plans from when this ditch was established back in 1904. But through Houston's work, they were able to determine that the ditch most likely lies on the original alignment as it was constructed. So the repair report established the as-constructed and subsequently improved condition, ACSIC. And this was verified using aerial photographs from the 1930s to verify that the ditch alignment as it is today matches as it did back then. They took soil borings to find a firm bottom of the ditch and this indicates the depth of sediment that has accumulated in the bottom of the ditch. They took those soil borings every 500 feet. So, also though, this repair report indicated additional property that may be receiving a benefit from this ditch that was not considered as part of the original construction. And on your screen now, as part of the report, is a map of the location of the ditch. Establishment documents support that the County Ditch Number Three was started at the rail line of what was then known as the Great Northern Railway, St. Cloud to Duluth Branch, and then traveling northerly and westerly towards Sock Rapids and then what was known as Potter's Creek at that time. A portion of the ditch from Highway 10 West was abandoned by the Drainage Authority. This map on your screen now shows the drainage area of County Ditch Three. Also on this map are the quarter-quarter sections highlighted in this light color blue of the parcels that were identified on the original viewer's report. So what we're saying is when this ditch was established, owners of quarter-quarter sections in these squares is what paid based on tax assessments for the construction and establishment of this ditch. Today, we know this approximate area drains towards this ditch. Therefore, we believe that there are additional properties that receive a benefit from this County Ditch. Furthermore, we know that when the ditch was established in 1904, about 328 acres were originally benefited. The value of the original benefits was $2,535. Today, we are bound by not, we could not complete a repair that exceeded those benefits without redetermining or determining what today's values of those benefits are. In other words, today's land, or 1904 viewer's report does not represent today's land values. So, this is the repair report, like I said, as part of this repair report is engineer data that would support a construction repair project. In these documents here, you see the alignment of the ditch. We see this dotted line represents the bottom of the ditch as it exists today. This solid black line would be the as-constructed subsequently improved condition. Basically, this is where the bottom of the ditch should be. So we do know that there is a need for repair of this ditch. In other words, there has been sediment that has accumulated in the bottom that is restricting the flow and reducing the original hydraulic, hydraulic efficiency of the ditch. But coupled with the fact that we may have additional lands benefiting from this ditch and that the, the most recent viewer's report, which is over 100 years old, does not reflect current land values. Today, as the County Ditch Engineer, I'm recommending that we stay the decision to order a repair report and then order a viewer's repair report and have the viewers determine all the properties that may or that would receive a benefit from County Ditch Three and therefore the value of their benefit before we order a repair report. I will note that Engineer Garrett Munson from Houston Engineering, who prepared this report for the Ditch Authority, is on the line if there's any questions of me or Garrett. We'd be happy to entertain those now.
Mr. Chair. Chris, can you give me just a general idea of what this does, the timeline of repairing County Ditch? So let's just say, for example, the Ditch Authority approves your recommendation to stay and then to order the viewer's report again. What are we looking at for a timeline here and to actually get the ditch done?
Yeah, very good question. So we have these viewers, we have a contract with H2O reviewers to do a redetermination on several other ditches. Actually, the part of that contract did include County Ditch Three. The, the term limit, or the term in those contract was with one calendar year and that was approved at the beginning of January. So they're, they're on contract to complete a redetermination of all of our ditches within this calendar year. I don't know when exactly County Ditch Three will be completed, but I do believe that this does push back the repair to be, it's unlikely that that repair would occur this calendar year.
All right, realistic. And, and because of the potential for the redetermination, you're looking at original benefited acres of 328, potentially going to 790.
Correct.
Acres.
Yes.
To spread the cost of that repair out.
Yeah. I did not, I failed to mention that part of the repair report, we do have an estimated opinion, a probable opinion of estimated cost to repair this of about $182,000. That does include a little bit of engineering costs and some legal and administrative costs with the contingency built in there as well. But that would be the idea is that $182,000 would be spread over all of the parcels receiving a benefit from this, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Chris? Okay, then I guess we'll, our next item on the agenda is to, a public hearing to consider this. And we did already hear from staff for that. I guess we'll now open the public hearing and if there's anyone in the audience or online that wishes to address the county board on this agenda, please, if so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, or if you're online, please ask to be recognized or some way will get to you. So is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak?
Right here.
Okay.
Steven Erdel at 565 14th Avenue Northeast, questions I got is, you're going to clean all the way up to Highway 10. What about in Sock Rapids? Will they clean their ditch out in the industrial park behind C and L Distributing?
I don't, I don't know if we have that, do we have that answer, Chris?
I do not have that answer. What I could say is our jurisdiction stops at the big box culvert under Highway 10. That's where our repair project would be limited to, under our authority as the, as the Drainage Authority. So I can tell you that Sock Rapids Public Works is aware of this. We've had conversations and played some phone tag regarding this. So I do not know their, their plans for the, or the condition of their storm sewer downstream.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, I can tell you with that.
Numerous conversations with the city of Sock Rapids and yes, they are aware of this. So it's really up to them to decide what they're going to do with their ditch or their drainage.
Since I'm in the city of Sock Rapids, do I have to file paperwork with the city to force them to do something there?
The city will probably do something when they see the water flowage come through and there's, and then there's an issue. But once again, we can't tell them what to do, of course, but they are aware that this is going to happen.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, how did that get passed in that Doser Park? When you got an eight-foot culvert under Highway 10, they go down to three, three two-foot culverts. How, you know, how do they, they're squeezing that? How, how do they get by with that?
I guess it would be a question for Chris or Michelle, does the cities operate the same way as the county? Or, or don't they have the obligation as to do their ditches?
Well, this, I will add that, you know, County Ditch Three is established in state law under 103E, that section of statutes.
Okay.
If there was a channel or even a closed tile line that existed under 103E within the city of Sock Rapids, it would fall under the same.
Same guidelines.
I will add, as part of the engineer report, the crossings, as it's called in the report, but basically the culverts underneath the two county roads and under Highway 10 were. but basically the culverts underneath the two county roads and under Highway ten were considered and looked at. And the culverts themselves are designed and have enough capacity to meet a hundred-year storm. So, and that kind of concludes what was under the purview of the engineer's report. So within the ditch system itself, I have a high level of confidence that the road is at low risk of overtopping if the ditch was repaired. Now, beyond the limits of what's established or what's on record as County Ditch Three, I cannot say at this time.
Okay.
Another question is paper that I've got here from back in February, Sock Rapids Herald, February first, twenty twenty. Kurt Dieter from Rincon Newton did an article on drainage ditch, on who's responsible for that. They said, once that county ditch is established, the county is supposed to maintain it. You can show me paperwork that you guys did any maintenance on here in the last hundred and forty years. I'm willing to pay my fair share of that, but when you guys are doing over a hundred miles of gravel road, and I'm paying for that, and I'm not using gravel roads, it should be a county issue here. That should be a full county payment of cleaning that ditch out.
There's a lot of ditches throughout the whole state that were left in repair, and these issues, you know, I've had the same conversation. Why has the ditches in Benton County been left to get the disrepair? It ain't only this ditch, it's been fifteen and sixteen and everyone else. And the county does not, in stature, or we do not pick up the cost to repair these ditches. It goes on the landowner.
What's maintain mean then?
Maintain means we have to look at them, redetermination, and fix them, but it's for the benefited acres.
Well, to me, maintaining, when's the last time it was looked at?
We don't, we don't know.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, I've been after this for over twenty years. Ever since Ron Freyhammer and Marty Rieker put those additions up there, that, that's when I started having problems. That ditch never would drain, my basement has been wet since then. And it's, it's, anyone I talk to, I've talked to even Bob Cassell, former engineer here, he says he's not gonna touch anything until the county board says he's gonna do something about it. So that's twenty-some years ago, and nothing's been done. Now, now you're gonna make everybody pay in that area. So to me, it should be a county issue.
Yeah.
And when you're talking other ditches here, which you aren't talking about, a lot of those farmers are putting their drain tile into those ditches. And they should have been permits pulled on that, there's nothing been pulled on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't think anybody up here is debating whether if these have been taken care of. You're a hundred percent right. We're forced with this problem now. The county doesn't, we're not in the position to pay for these ditches. It's gotta be assessed back to the people that it positively affects. With that said, you're right, there's a lot of, all these ditches are gonna have a lot of people either very happy that it's getting fixed or very unhappy that they're getting assessed, being a mile or two down the road. But this redetermination that the county went through or is going through right now is actually showing a lot of detail on how people are being affected in a positive or negative way. And actually, those determinations are gonna be based on tiers, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris?
Yeah, I apologize, our viewers weren't able to stay on the line long enough. So, yeah, when the viewers do their work, they come up with, there's four different classifications of land with A through D. A being the land that receives the most benefit, and D receiving the least benefit. So they take into account a number of factors, soil types, topography, land use types. A lot of these times, these ditches are occurring in primarily agricultural areas. This ditch is unique because we're mostly developed in urban areas. But we do know that some of the developed areas do have storm sewer that collect runoff from the adjacent lands, from the streets as well. And some of that storm sewer does discharge towards that ditch, so there is a connection there. Proximity to the ditch also plays into a factor in the value of your benefit. The viewers take a look at the time it takes, so if rain falls from the sky and lands on your property, how long does it take to actually get to that ditch? That affects the value of the benefit that you receive, so. I will add that for this notification, the mailer, we sent out over five hundred letters to parcels, so that shows the scope of the land, or scope of the effect here. You can't just take a hundred and eighty-two divided by five hundred, though, because as Commissioner Kupinski alluded to, there's different classifications of land, not everybody will receive the same value of benefit and therefore would not pay the same apportionment cost to the ditch.
Mr. Chair, and if I could, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I think Steve, you mentioned with farmers, you know, ditching and running their water into these ditches, that's gonna be, that's gonna be seen or caught, if you will, when they do, when the viewers go out and look at these ditches.
Yeah.
And that's gonna then help determine the benefit that they're getting from it, correct, Chris?
Takes into account, yes.
The benefited acres will grow.
Right, exactly.
You know, tile as well.
Is this all gonna be, you know, ditch three, is that gonna be all looped together with all the other ditches that are being going through? Or is this just this one ditch here?
No, we've got a contract with Houston.
I'll say, when the viewers are doing their work, they're considering each ditch uniquely. So there'll be additional landowner notifications regarding specifically this ditch. And most likely, we will have another public hearing on the viewer's report when it's completed, specifically for this ditch. We won't try to lump it on together. Even on the map that's on the screen, you can see the proximity to two other, well, it just says County Ditch eleven, but we have County Ditch ten just to the north of here. So those ditches are being looked at currently, but we will address those separately.
Chris, could you check the chat? I think you may have a couple of folks that I would like to speak to.
All right.
One more, is this gonna be a one-time payment thing, or is this gonna be, you know, ten or twenty or thirty bucks or whatever, fifty bucks? Every assessment, every property tax that, every year then, to maintain it?
On the other, the other ditches we did, we give the option to be assessed, you know, on your property taxes, or you have the option to pay it upfront.
There's nothing in here where, since it hasn't been maintained, where the county's gonna actually kick something in your per-cost share?
No, from me personally, I wouldn't wanna get into that because we have, what, thirteen, fifteen ditches? And that could be a large assessment to the county, so we can't pick and choose one ditch over the other ditch. And we've got two ditches that were already done, and we're in the same boat. They weren't looked at for years. I mean, we went out and looked at ditch thirteen and fifteen, and you would not believe the size of the trees and everything else that was in these ditches. And so we can't, we can't pick and choose and, you know, pay for one ditch and not the other ditch. And we've already established that it's gonna be property, you know, the benefited acres that are gonna pay for it. You know, you get into the northwest part of the county where there is no ditches, you probably would have a lot of pushback telling them that they had to pay for a ditch that's draining down southeast of Foley.
Mr. Chair, and if I could too, because I think I heard Steve's, another question was, and just to clarify, the beneficiaries of these, beneficiaries of these county ditches would be the ones that are assessed. That's different than money being put away for future maintenance. So we're talking about two different things here, is what I've heard you ask. And so when the ditch is cleaned and done, that will be assessed to the people who are benefiting from it, right? But then I think there's ongoing discussion with the ditch authority, what our future plans are for maintenance dollars. Those are two different things.
Okay.
And just to clarify, when somebody does put in a request for a repair, we have to act, and it becomes more of a legal issue at that point. And we've got no choice to, but to order this repair estimate and follow through with it. These have been not maintained for a long time.
How long ago has this been out, where you could put a ditch cleaning thing in? This paper that I filled out.
Oh, for a long time, I would think.
For a petition.
Yeah, petition, I think.
No one has ever questioned me to fill out one of these, a petition to fill out, none, even Cassell. No one, you know, I talked to the wrong people, I guess, because this should have been done twenty years ago then.
Well, that's a weak thing too, but.
Your points are valid.
They are valid, you know. When I came onto the board, that's when they really started looking into the ditch issues. That was only three years ago, they did talk about it in the previous past, of course, but nothing ever got done.
I think at the end of the day, there is some, there's movement towards getting it done now.
Well, it still burns me is that I'm paying for gravel roads, maintenance on gravel roads. You know, that's why I said this should be a county issue, because I'm not driving on county roads.
And maybe, maybe just for clarification, Michelle, you can help me here, or Chris, the assessment goes to the property owners who are benefiting, by statute?
By statute.
Okay, that's, that's the reason. We can't spread this out across the county taxpayers, by statute.
Well, then there should be a statute for gravel then.
Well, now you need to take up with your local.
Because you're buying a three-hundred-thousand-dollar road grader every three, four years. My tax dollars are going to that.
Twenty years.
Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Beth?
Chris, with the Highway ten and twenty-three project coming through, how is that going to be affected?
Yeah, very good question. So maybe that's where we can tie it in. So the viewers will determine, as they have on other ditches, that the roads will receive a benefit because the water that drains off of the road, a portion of that will drain into that ditch. So the different road authorities will have an assessment as well. We will have an assessment for the acres of our roadway that drain into that ditch. If there's any city streets or township roads, they will receive an assessment as well as with the state. I believe on our two previous ditches that we did a redetermination on fifteen and sixteen, I want to say, yeah, they, Highway ninety-five drained into those ditches, and they received an assessment as well. So, yeah, so the road authorities are kinda treated like they are a parcel owner in that same area. And the benefit that that road receives will have an apportionment cost additionally, so.
Okay, I think he's got a question back there.
Okay, Mark?
Mr. Chair, I got one question, why are all these landowners are gonna be assessed? And there's private ditches in there which is causing water to back up already, and they're gonna be assessed. How do those landowners that are gonna be paying benefit on that get that private ditch cleaned out to drain that? Because I know there's gonna be questions brought up about that, especially between County Road forty-five and forty-six.
I would, my determination would be that a private ditch is a private ditch. They're not gonna get it cleaned out by the ditch authority.
So then there's really no assessment to the landowners because there's no water drainage for them, correct?
Well, if they're within that benefited acres, benefited area, they would be.
But it's not draining?
So that, the viewers will take a look at that, and the fact that a private ditch exists and the condition of their private ditch is kinda almost inconsequential to the county ditch. I will say, though, if the county ditch is repaired, that does open up the likelihood that landowners could. Because really, nothing would preclude a private landowner from cleaning out a private ditch up to a county ditch, although they may not see any increased efficiency because the county ditch is backed up, so.
Mr. Chair, but again, Chris, when the viewers presented to us, that's all taken into consideration, the possibility of these private ditches flowing into the county ditch.
Because, yeah, that forces them to look at where does that water come from?
I mean, that'll be recognized in the viewer's report.
It should, yes, yeah, it'll recognize.
And talked about with the individual property owners.
Yes, that's where landowner meetings come into play sometimes. They talk to, and this is primarily agricultural lands, but landowner meetings to find out if they have tiled fields where, I seen it on those two previous ditches where we completed, the viewers, based on the topography, thought the water went one way, but talking to the landowner and finding the drain tile went to a different direction, that did change the value of their assessments, so.
The other part is if they're gonna clean out a private ditch, they need to contact soil and water as well. I mean, you can't just create a ditch or clean a ditch without soil and water being notified. I.
I, that would need clarification.
If you're, if you're in the programs, you sign a deal every year that you haven't drained or done anything to ditches when you do your final crop reports and stuff like that, so.
That could be. Now, there's also, if you attach a private ditch to a public ditch without going through the correct processes, that's also problematic, which is something we dealt with in ditch thirteen and fifteen, if you recall. So they will take into consideration all of that. They will notify us if there's a concern regarding a private ditch that's connecting up with the county ditch. So all of that will be addressed through that redetermination process and viewer's repair report for those additional properties.
Mark?
One more quick question, and the only reason I'm asking this question is because I know I'm gonna get asked. So with these private ditches now being in the orderly annexation, does that change anything from the county's aspect?
It wouldn't, I mean, we still, as the county, have jurisdiction over that county ditch, and anything that drains into that county ditch is of concern.
Mr. Chair, we'll note that it appears that there's someone that are online that would like to speak as well.
Okay. Just make sure they unmute their microphones.
Yeah, so if you're on the line and you know how to unmute your microphone, you may do so at this time.
Why don't you, you wanna call on?
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe we could call.
Hello, it's working.
My name is Trent Roberts.
Okay, go ahead.
One thousand cent for Northeast. Just a few questions for this. I've lived there for thirty-some years. So it sounds like a whole, a good number of people will be assessed for this. I was wondering if anyone's taken a look at the massive Beaver Dam on parcel zero nine zero zero five three two zero zero. But that is getting quite out of here, and I just wanted to bring it up to someone's attention because I know that could cause headaches for people downstream of that, if I could plus it open.
All right, I will address that, Mr. Chair. Yes, we are aware of that, and so I'll switch hats here from county ditch engineer to county highway engineer. We are aware of that Beaver Dam. Unfortunately, that, where the location of that Beaver Dam is, it does not lie in a statutory county ditch, it's just on private property. We've been watching it and tracking it as a road concern. So if that continues to grow and we continue to see water backing up, and it starts to compromise or threaten our roadway, we'll take action under our road authority jurisdiction and not the county ditch authority jurisdiction, if that makes any sense. But because the location, the physical location of the Beaver Dam does not lie in a statutory county ditch, we can't take action under those means, if that answers that question.
Yes, I mean, you would say that where that water backup is, it does drain into this county ditch though, right?
Not necessarily, because there is an open channel that crosses under our forty-six, and that's part of this process that we're hoping to initiate today, is to look at that. I believe that that open channel crosses under Mayhew Lake Road and goes behind, follows along the railroad tracks, crosses under the old railroad bed, east of County Ditch Three, behind the old Honda House, and it may actually connect to that open channel south of what's established as County Ditch Three. But I'm hoping if we initiate this process, we will have, we will determine that conclusively and therefore take that into account on the assessed benefits.
Okay, and I know that once upon a time, there was a massive Beaver Dam on my property, and I do believe the county came and cleaned that out, because I think it was backing up into someone's basement. I wanna say, I'm on the other side of, you know, where the Hoover Dam is.
Yes.
Somebody else down there, but that was a massive problem. There's another Beaver Dam being built right on, it's on the city of Sock Rapids side, in that ditch. So where does the city of Sock Rapids like come into play with this ditch? Now that they have a pretty significant chunk of property that's connected to that?
Well, much like I said earlier, they'll be viewed as any other parcel. If it was privately owned, they will determine the value of the benefit provided to that parcel from the county ditch and received in, you know, an appropriate apportionment to the total cost and therefore receive an assessment. Just as if it was their roadways or, you know, a municipal-owned parcel, that will be determined, if that receives a benefit or not.
I think that's, and I got that, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think what Spencer was asking is if that, if the Beaver Dam is making it inside that ditch, who's responsible for removing that Beaver Dam?
Oh, if it's within County Ditch Three, it would be the Drainage Authority's responsibility to remove that. And we've done that before, we've removed Beaver Dams before. Within, yeah, when it lies physically within the statutory county. Within, yeah, when it lies physically within the statutory county ditch, we will, we will remove those.
But I think, I think the one he's talking about was, it was on the Sock Rapids side of the, in that ditch, in the Sock Rapids portion of the ditch.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
On my property, and I don't know if you guys are hearing me, but right, right on the property line, there's, there's a ditch, um, excuse me, there's a Beaver Dam on the Sock Rapids side.
Well, I, I, maybe I'd encourage you to contact me at my office and we can discuss the particulars of that, uh, outside of this meeting and make sure I'm looking at the right location that you're at. So I'd recommend you calling the, the Highway Department office and we can speak specifically about that.
I will do that, thank you.
All right, hey, thanks. Then when, when you go off, could you mute your mic then right away?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, next we'll have Sheila Barcade Bozeman, Bozo. Yep. Go ahead. Are you ready? We're not, we're not hearing you. Well, should we come back to them? We'll come back to you after a little bit. Kaylee Longsworth, you do wish to speak?
I don't have anything to speak about at this time, thank you.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Garrett Munson?
Yeah, so I'll be engineering the report, and I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have as a board or any questions you think I could address from that.
He's on the county side.
So far, uh, you've done a great job of covering the kind of big picture ideas of viewing and processing forward. And I think, uh, there's a pretty good handle on the statutory side of those too. But if you have any other questions on the engineering side, if you're in the realm of the statute, uh, don't hesitate.
Okay, thanks. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak at this time? Do we call on, do we call on Wendy at the bottom there? Is that Wendy? Wendy McConnell? Wendy? Wendy wants to speak, she'll need to unmute. Yeah, I think she's mainly been listening for. Okay, okay. Back to Sheila. Back, back to Sheila Bozo, what is it? I can't read. Barclay Bozo. Barclay Bozo.
Thank you, I have nothing to ask at this time.
Okay, hey, thanks. Can you mute your mic then? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, um, my family has four properties down between Lincoln Avenue and Highway Ten, just on the northeast side. How is that going to affect us? Between Highway Ten and every, the twenty-three project?
Yeah, I think at this point, it's tough to say, uh, you know, this line is not, uh, perfect. It's a little bit of a, um, there's a lot of science, but maybe it's a little bit of an art. So we do see that the drainage area or the watershed, if you will, does kind of extend close to Lincoln Avenue. So we'll have to complete this process to see, um, exactly what the impact is, um, for specific parcels.
We can have city sewer too.
And that's the thing, that's going to, this process is going to involve reviewing storm sewer plans and road construction plans to find which way that those storm sewers, um, outlet and discharge. So that, that's all going to have to be considered and affects this, this process.
Okay, if anybody else have any comments, otherwise we're going to read the findings. I'm just wanting, is Michelle prepared or is Chris prepared maybe to walk the board through? It might be efficient if you could walk. Michelle, should we close the public hearing before we? Walk us through this, Michelle. We had the final call for anybody wishing to hear. Are there any emails, letters, or communications to be read?
Oh, sorry, that's me. Um, no, I have not received any written communications regarding this public hearing.
Has the department received any comments, concerns from state agencies, cities, townships on this agenda?
Uh, no, we have not.
Was there, um, the county board will no longer have time for questions of the staff. And that as a reminder to the audience, the public hearing portion is closed. Are there any questions, comments from board members before we move on? I think we had that already. Okay. And then we need to read the findings to support our stay of processing. Okay. There is sufficient evidence that the property which was not assessed for benefit for the construction of the drainage system has been drained into the drainage system or has otherwise benefited from them. The potential benefited properties and property owners are identified on Exhibit A, Figure Two of Houston's Engineering Technical Memorandum dated April first. The existing benefits and drainage of the records do not reflect the reasonable present-day land values and benefited and damaged areas have been changed. The proportion of the ditch has been abandoned. The latest redetermination was completed in nineteen oh four. Land values have changed since then. The cost of any repair would exceed the original benefited if a redetermination of benefit is, is not completed. The final decision on the repair of the Benton County Ditch Number Three should be stayed until the further, until the benefits have been redetermined. Order for a stay or repair process and redetermination.
You would want a motion?
Do you want a motion on this?
Someone should motion and order all of those things.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to.
Could be good reading.
The, the previous reading.
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to the findings to support a redetermination. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. Now we'll read the, the order to stay or repair proceedings and determine.
So yeah, just motion that you're going to order.
Okay, so the motion was to order a.
So you're, you're going to motion and then say A, B, C, D, E.
Oh.
Do you want those red?
You want them red, okay. Michelle, or excuse me, members, I'll make a motion to order the stay for repair proceeding and determination in regards to the following items. Item A, stay the petition to repair Benton County Number Three, uh, until the viewers complete a viewer's repair report. And the Benton County Board of Commissioners holds a hearing on the viewer's report, repair report and determines the benefits to property and entitles benefit, entities, excuse me, benefited by the original construction of the drainage system and not assessed for benefits. Per Minnesota statutes one oh three E point seven four one. Also then in, uh, Letter B, order a redetermination of benefits and damages in accord with one oh three E, uh, point three five one. The existing benefits and damages of record that do not reflect reasonable present-day land values and benefited and damaged areas have changed. Item C, order a viewer's repair report in accord with Minnesota statutes one oh three E dot seven four one. Since property not assessed benefit for the construction of the drainage system has been benefited by the drainage system as identified in Figure Two of the Houston Engineering Technical Memorandum dated April first, twenty twenty-one in Exhibit A. Item D, appoint the following persons as ditch viewers in accordance with Minnesota statutes one oh three E dot three oh five, who shall determine the benefits to all property and entities benefited by the original construction of the drainage system and not assessed for benefits arising from its construction. Brian Murphy, Chantel Hecht, Larry Murphy, Robert Connolly as an alternate or consultant. Item E, the viewers, uh, shall make a viewer's repair report to the Drainage Authority as provided by Minnesota statutes one oh three E point three one five. Item F, the Benton County Auditor Treasurer shall designate the time and the location for the first meeting of the viewers and shall issue a copy to the viewers of the auditor's order and a certified copy of the order appointing the viewers. Item G, at the first meeting and before the beginning of their duties, the viewer shall subscribe to an oath to faithfully perform their duties. If an appointed viewer does not qualify for any reason, the auditor shall designate another qualified person to take the disqualified viewer's place. And finally, item H, after the viewer's report is filed, the Benton County Auditor Treasurer shall send notice of a hearing as is required by Minnesota statutes one oh three E point three two five. The ditch authority shall hear all interested parties and determine benefits to the property and entities benefited by the original construction of the drainage ditch and not assessed for benefits.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Nice job, Scott.
So any other discussion? You heard items A through H, any other discussion?
I want to thank Michelle for, uh, putting, laying this out so that we can understand it compared to previous meetings.
And just for clarification for those in the public, we are, uh, staying the repair proceeding and we're going to officially move forward with the redetermination of benefits so that we make sure we have all the property covered. Okay.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. I guess that's all we need. Right? Update on Ten? Yeah, he's going to give us an update on Ten.
Yeah, I'm not done yet, so, uh, I'm sorry. All right, so I just wanted to give you, so we are proceeding with a redetermination of benefits, like we said, on several other ditches. So an issue came up on County Ditch Ten that I just wanted to make you all aware of. Uh, the viewers, maybe I'll ask for forgiveness, I hadn't authorized this work. So County Ditch Ten, um, not too far from where we were just talking about. But County Ditch Ten also lies in a public water known as Mayhew Creek. The ditch as established in the establishment document starts about here and then travels northerly in Mayhew Creek to this section line here between Section twenty and twenty-nine. But Mayhew Creek continues farther north and you're probably aware of Mayhew Lake that exists. This solid black line denotes the approximate watershed of County Ditch Ten. So there's about twenty-one thousand acres in this watershed. This lake throws a wrench into the cogs. So, uh, the viewers need to do a little bit more study into this in what's called a lake attenuation study. Um, to help determine the value of benefit, the viewers look at the time it takes for the water that lands on your property to get to the ditch. And about twenty-four hours is kind of cut off. If it gets to your ditch, uh, gets to the ditch within twenty-four hours and then that volume helps determine the, the benefit. If it takes longer than twenty-four hours to get to the ditch, the value drops off, uh, quite a bit. So the viewers need to take a look at the effect that have in this lake here that provides some storage before it discharges downstream into the ditch and see how that affects the value of these parcels. It could be that maybe mo- majority of these parcels north of this lake do not receive a benefit even though they're within the County Ditch Ten watershed. I wanted to bring this up because if you recall, the viewers gave us a flat rate of a four dollars per acre to do this work. This is going to reduce, reduce in a little bit of additional acre, or a cost, uh, per acre. Um, about, just under twenty-five hundred dollars to do this little study on the impact of this, this lake. I think it's good idea to do it because it gives us, um, some additional data that could be defensible whether we determine that our values that should be attributed to these la- uh, lands up here or not. I think that's good information for us to have as a drainage authority to be able to defend, um, the viewer's report. Um, but at this point, we don't know. We do know that we can take a watershed approach at looking at this. A lot of land lives or lies within the watershed, but the fact that there's a lake in the middle greatly affects the value of the benefit.
Mr. Chair, if I could, and as respectfully as I can, Mayhew Lake didn't just show up. So when they looked at our project, Mayhew Lake was there.
Correct, it was there, yep, mm-hmm.
And so I, I, I'm not arguing with the, that we should do it. I'm, I'm having a little hard time chewing on the extra dollars. Just because this should not have been a surprise.
Is there anything that's going to come out of Little Rock Lake? We're not, no, I don't think there's no ditches up there.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, you're right, so I'll address your comment, uh, first. You're right, uh, Mayhew Lake existed for a long time. Whether they looked at that, um, I think it's, obviously they did not consider that when they gave us the quote of the four dollars there's per acre. They didn't look at it closely enough to see that there's a lake there.
And, and if I remember correctly, there were a handful of us that questioned, you know, we were talking. That was one of the items we pulled out of the contract was the hourly rate. And what was going to potentially be coming in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so I, I guess at a minimum, I think there should be maybe some more discussion with you on that.
Okay.
Um, I'm not comfortable approving that without maybe a little more information. Um, that's just my opinion.
I would have to agree with your opinion. That lake was there.
Yep.
They should have known about it when they were doing the study.
And we're probably not doing due diligence if we let that study be assessed to the benefited acres.
Correct. To put it into context, I know it's still additional cost. You, you have a very valid point. Uh, depending on what we, twenty-one thousand acres, it's ten cents per acre. If it's less than that, it could be another fifteen cents, uh, uh, per acre. So you're right, it's an additional cost, um, per acre that we're incurred. And whether they should have known or did know before they gave us that price is, is the big question right now.
And that's, excuse me, uh, Mr. Chair, Chris, it's a good point. The, the fact of the matter is, it's still additional cost.
Yeah.
And so are we holding something up by not approving that right now? Without a little more information or a, a conversation that you could maybe have with them?
Yeah, I, I tell you, our conversations did, did, uh, that I've had so far with them is, they were somewhat surprised that the watershed was so, uh, so tall and skinny as they, they put it. Uh, I think us that live in this area, we know, well, you got, yep, that makes sense. You got Mayhew Creek over here, then you have Elk River, a little bit more to the east. You got the St. Francis River, you know, driving east to west across this county, you can kind of see those. And so we know that. They, they claimed that they were surprised that the watershed would have extended so far to the north and would have encompassed that, uh, that, that lake, so. But we can have further conversation.
And I also, I'd like to add, from everything I've heard, they've been doing an excellent job. That's not my concern. It's just the concern of the extra dollars, be it minimal per acre, I understand.
Mr. Chair? Mm-hmm. But my, we asked them for specific, you know, what, what would be outside the realm? And the last time I looked, we're the land of ten thousand lakes, you know? And I'm not, you know, I know things get overlooked and everything, so, you know, it is a very small amount. But I think a few people up here, uh, had said, we're not doing our due diligence if we're not asking the questions and stuff like that. So I, I would just like to have a little bit of an understanding why they may have overlooked that.
And, and Chris, excuse me, Mr. Chair, Chris, is that something that Garrett can speak to here today while he's here? If he's still with us, or is that something that potentially, um, I believe it was, um, you know, like Brian Murphy or Larry, those guys that we spoke with originally on the contract? I'm not sure if that's something that can be talked about while we're here, if that's something you need to bring back.
I think it's something we may need to, to bring back. I don't see Garrett on the call. Brian Murphy is the one that I've been conversing about, uh, with this. Um, behind the scenes, uh, H two reviewers in Houston, I do know has a, they have a partnership. And Houston does provide a lot of the engineering side of what the H two overviewers does. So there is a, there is a relationship there. I don't believe Garrett would be able to comment on that. I don't see him on the call anymore. So it's something we'll probably have to bring back.
And again, I'm sorry if I, if I didn't hear you, are we delaying this if, by getting some more information in a few weeks?
Well, I think at this point, I will need to tell, yeah, H two reviewers to not move forward with that study. There's other work they could be doing, um, but, um, I don't know if the strength of their viewer's reports will be as strong without, without this study. So, um, there's, we've got other ditches that they certainly could probably work on though.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I think in the end, we'll probably end up having to do it, but just the question of why they may have overlooked that. And I think what they're doing is absolutely needed and they're doing a good job.
From my perspective, I'd like some justification before we pull the trigger on it, is all I'm getting at.
Correct.
Sure, so, yeah, all right. Just taking some notes. Well, very good, that's why I wanted to bring it before you to, to make you aware and, uh, at least allow you to have the conversation or ask those questions.
Thank you. Anything else? Then we're adjourned on ditch authority.